Good morning. I'd like to welcome you to our Budget Retreat. At this time, I'll ask Commissioner Lay if he will lead us in an indication. If all will please rise.
The flag was about to be able to scream.
Pretend the flag will have the flag on screen.
Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come here today, this beautiful day, and do the bid of the town. We thank you for all the blessings that you've given us. We thank you for the help that we have today. But we ask you to be with us today and we make the right decisions for the town of Oak Mills. And if you walk over our first responders, keep them safe and out of harm's way. We ask you to be with our police department and our town staff. They have put all this together to make it easier on us to make a decision. And I ask if you'll be with us to help us make the right decision. We will never fail you, even pray in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may see it. You want me to do the introduction and give you some sales for?
You can do it. I was going to do that.
Go ahead. At this time, we're going to turn our meeting over to our Finance Director, Mr. Drew Holland.
Okay. As everybody can see, our, I guess who will be approved the other night, me, because our internal town manager is here today. And if we could do this, if each person could just go around the room, introduce themselves, and then at the end, Bill, you want to just say a few words yourself, and then we'll get into the meat of the meeting.
Okay. Letitia Black, HR Director.
Tyler Riddle, Stormwater.
I'm Beth Brown, I'm the Stormwater Administrator.
Chancellor of Climate and Economic Development.
I'm LaMarco Morrison, I'm the Parks and Recreation Director.
Commissioner Bellflower.
Commissioner Abrams.
Mayor Cook, thank you so much.
Mayor Warner.
Attorney Moore.
Commissioner Gary Head.
Town Attorney, Julie Stone.
Light Treasurer, Drew Holland.
Melissa Adams, Town Manager.
Julie Stone, Police Chief.
And I'm Bill Zell. And I was manager in Aberdeen for 14 years before I retired. I was over in Davidson County prior to that. But I look forward to working with you all. I guess I officially start on the 15th. So basically, what I would like to do is keep with each one of you and just sort of find out what you do, find out what's working, what's not working, see what we can do. But I think Melissa has talked to you. We're not here to do any changes. This is not, that's not my job. So we're here to work with you and help you to be the best you can be. So I look forward to working with each one of you.
Okay. And to start off with, as you do each year at the Budget Retreat, you should have a copy of the CIB. And Chancellor did this wonderful cover for us this year. If you can see, kind of faded in there, it's pictures from the ground where we built Public Safety Center. And that's Chuck Hodges, the Fire Chief in the top corner. I'm going to get him to offer my copy. But if you look at your CIB, the same setup as previous years, this is everything that we would like to do in the next five years. There's no way we can do all of it. It's kind of a planning tool. That is one of the reasons why we don't have you approve it. You just accept it. And because if it was approved, then it counts or acts, just like the budget does. You have to amend it to change everything. This becomes a more formal document. This way, as we've done in the past several years, if something comes up that's unanticipated, or priority changes, or, you know, whatever happens, we have the ability to make adjustments a whole lot easier. So there's already been a few updates since this was completed, and we're going to talk about some of those today. But as we're going through it, we can reference some of the projects in here. And if you see anything in the CIB that you have a question about, or a project that's either not in here, or the numbers need to look different, please give me a call and let me know. As I said, it's kind of a living document. We can make changes to it. But really, it's made for planning purposes, so we can look ahead and know what's on the horizon and prepare for that in advance. And we will be discussing some of the things in here as we go along today. Any questions so far on the CIB?
Yes, sir. Is there any in this document, Chris Redd, the result of the golf course?
It is in here in the Parks and Rec section. Yeah, there's actually two parks that pertain to the golf course property. It has one for like the total master plan altogether, and one specifically for the athletic portion of the park.
I'm thinking of the people who are there with me.
Right. Heritage Park is either also, I think, two different things. One for Heritage Park Total Master Plan, and one for just what we have coming up with the park. I guess that'd be Phase One.
Phase One.
Yeah. But definitely, and I know you just got it, but if you have questions on this later, or have a chance to look at, give me a call, send me an email, and we can discuss that. Anything else on the CIB? Okay. We'll go on to the next part, which is the financial update. Some of the information that I normally give you in this financial update, I do not have yet. The Cumberland County updated their property tax software. So they're behind, not really behind, but they're learning how to get the same information they got before from the new software. So I don't have the most current numbers from the county as of yet. We will definitely have it further into the budget season. But usually, this early in the process, I have an update from, you know, where we stand as of right now. I called her last week. The person gave me that report from the county. She said she tried to get it to me, and as of yesterday, I did not have it yet. So for right now, looking at the discussion points on page two in your package for property taxes, I don't have the current number for property taxes right now. So, but I do have, based on what she gave me, one cent of property tax is about $121,000. That's where it stands right now today. They'll be adding adjustments, you know, things that they find irregularities in some of the assessments and things like that they're working on now, but we'll have a more up-to-date number. But that's the biggest thing for this part right now. The estimate, that is not accurate at this point. The one cent of tax right now, the 121, that's what they have as of today. More to be aim for taxes, that's a pretty accurate number, and it has gone up a little bit from this year to last year, only about $32,000. It's not significant, but at least it's going up. It's not stagnant, and it hasn't gone down. Recreation tax, that is based on the one cent valuation. So that is just a little bit, I think the current year, we budgeted $601,000. The number right now, as it stands, is $607,000. So that's gone up slightly. Sales tax, right now, sales tax is our best increase in numbers at this time. We're at 38, or we're estimating this year to finish around 3.8, just over 3.8 million. And I'll keep tracking that up to the time that we submit the budget to you. But right now, it's an increase from last year to this year, the estimate of about $183,000, which is very good given the situation with COVID and things. We're very lucky that Cumberland County is an active county. A lot of counties go backwards. A lot of counties, I know the mayor, I believe it was the mayor that asked me this a while back, where you saw a lot of the major cities and metropolitan areas were really hurting for sales tax. And one of the differences that we have that they don't have is, if you think of the Triangle area, they had a lot of events, and sports teams, and concerts, and all of those types of things, just all over Wake County and those areas. Well, every single one of those things was put through an exact audit. None of them happened. They all shut down, and they're still shut down. I think last night was the first hockey game that actually had to happen in Raleigh. So when you take all that out of your system, that's a big hit. Well, we didn't have much of that in our system. If you look at the Cumberland County area, we did have the cram, which had some events. They had just started the baseball, the Highland baseball team. But this area doesn't have near as many events as some other areas. So the hit for Cumberland County wasn't near as bad as some other areas. So in regular times, it might not be as good. But in times like this, when that section is completely shut down, we're not hurting as bad as some other areas. Sales taxes would vary above. And the debt schedule, I have that attached just behind that sheet. And I have added in here the interest payment for the construction loan and the estimate that will be for the USDA loan ongoing after the public safety building is completed. So that shows the debt scenarios played out over the next several years. But we're in a good situation right now. My estimates for the year show us coming, last year, we just about broke even. This year, we should be just, I'm hoping to be just above that, because we haven't used a lot of fund balance for projects this year. That weren't personally in the budget. Any questions?
Is there really a way that we could take some of these small balances that we owe? Do we have the funds to pay some of these small loans?
Smaller debts that are almost paid off? There are ways to do that. The problem is the banks use account on this interest, and they have a prepayment penalty. So you wind up either paying a little bit more, or it turns out to be about what you would have paid. Because the banks can get their money. It turns out to be about what you would have paid anyways, if you just paid it.
I just thought.
In the break of time.
Yeah, just like my budget at home.
Right.
I can, I like pay off car or whatever.
Then we'd be saving money, and the bank doesn't like that.
But I don't work for them, guys.
But they own the debt. So we have to play by their rules for that. Anything else?
They do it differently than they do.
Exactly. Exactly. But again, if you have, after today, or anytime, if you've got any questions about any of this, please call me, email me, and let me know. Of course, when we present the budget to it, we'll have all the numbers accurate as of that time. This is, you know, still very early in the process. Ready to move on to the next one?
By the way, I'm Tim Martin, I'm the director. Sorry for there being a technical issue. Sorry for the rest, I'm repairing the trailer. Is there a password for this?
No, just say enter. Okay. Now we're going to introduce something that we've been talking about for a long time. It's finally starting to get to the point where we need to make some decisions on it. For Parks and Rec and streets, we've talked about, well, we've talked more about Parks and Rec. I don't know if we've talked at the council level about streets or some geo bonds in the future. What we're looking at, if you look at the second page behind the heading, this is a schedule that we can start now to get to the point where we could potentially have a bond referendum at the election in fall of 2023. Not this fall, but the next election. This is everything that needs to happen, that would need to happen before that time. But if you look at this schedule, spring 2021, that's where we are right now. If I get consensus from town council or town staff to pursue the projects for possible geo bond finals, and what we'd like to present to you is when we get into this, the Parks and Rec, Jerry, you just asked about the golf course property.
Yes, sir.
The rest of Heritage Park, the upgrades that we want to do to municipal park. And at this point, there could be some Parks and Rec projects that we don't even know about yet that need to come forward in the next year or so. We could package those together for the bond referendum. The other thing we're looking at is streets. We had a presentation, I don't remember when it was, it was over a year ago, about, you know, the deterioration of our town streets, how much is needed to get them just up to par where they need to be right now. We did talk about it at the retreat last year. And last year, we decided to move forward with the crack seal and some other maintenance and things like that to extend the life of the current roads. But they really need a major overhaul. And I believe when we got that presentation over a year ago, it was to the extent that they were talking about, we need to fund about $800,000 a year for 10 years, which is $8 million for streets. We don't have $8 million for streets. Our Powellville only gets $425,000 a year. And that has to cover some operational costs and expenses. That usually leaves about $150,000, $200,000 just for street maintenance. That doesn't get us anywhere near the level we have to be. It gets maintenance. It covers what we need to do so the streets still function. But as far as the major overhaul that was presented over a year ago, that's something we're looking at also. That could be something for bonds. So we propose going throughout Parks and Rec and streets.
Clear program.
Oh, it's up?
Yeah, some clearer program.
Oh, it's on that disc, that stick.
The red one, do you have remote? Did you give you a remote switch?
She was going to.
I'm sorry.
Is this it? Yes, it should be a little.
Do you have a question on that?
Okay.
What's happening with the Powellville fund? Are we not collecting as much as we used to, and we just have a lot more streets? And I know it's based on mileage.
Right. There's a formula. We get some of it from the fuel tax. It's based on street miles of the town. But here's the thing with Powellville. People are using less fuel. So every year that I've been here, our Powellville revenues have gone down. Not significantly, but usually that's revenue you'd like to see increasing here, so you can put more to streets and sidewalks, and more sort of operations to maintain them. But when I first got here, it was around $430,000. And it drops about $3,000 each year. So I think this year, we're 415. Somewhere in that range? We're up?
Need to come out? Need to turn off the middle light and see if that, are you guys okay?
Okay. It's at the end. There it is, that one. Why is it stuck up? I know. You're getting a preview of Parks and Rec.
Middle light's on or off?
Off. Off. Sorry to inconvenience.
Thank you for your help.
No problem.
Glad you did that. We did that.
There we go. How about that?
I feel the same way.
Here's our flag. There's the CIB, we talked about that. There's the financial thing. Okay, here's to your bonds. We're talking about Parks and Rec, not just the golf course property, but as I said, Heritage Park, Municipal Park, and other things that come up between now and then, and then the streets. If you're asking about where we are for revenues for Powellville, it's trading down, even though we're adding about less than two miles of streets a year with some of the annexations. So it's not that we're adding a lot to make up that difference. It's just people are using less fuel. And with COVID, if you think about it, for about two or three months last year, there was hardly any traffic whatsoever. Good part of that was I was able to get to work a lot quicker, but during that time, but people are using less fuel. And so that part of the process is allowing us to actually get less revenue just because people are using less fuel than they did before. So, but at least it's not a huge amount that we're losing in Powellville each year. It's staying just over $400,000, but it's not increasing. So each year, as operation costs go up, we actually have a little bit less money to use.
Any other on there?
Yes.
Hey Drew, since I've been on board, this has been something that was discussed when I first got on about the geo bond.
Right.
Because these are two key pieces that people talk about a lot.
Right.
They talk about recreational opportunities, and then they talk about street maintenance. And I mean, you can hear this almost every day of every week. There's some concern about both of them. So I'm good with starting. If you're looking for consensus from me, I'm good.
Right. And see, that helps too, with, if these are what the citizens are asking about, and you go to a bond referendum, three years, essentially, it's three years from now, and we're promoting this because we want the citizens to vote for this. And if we have consensus from the council, consensus from staff, we're all behind this 100%. Get the residents to back it. We educate them, we show them, here's what we're going to spend the money on. He got to work. Then that makes the referendum a whole lot easier and more of a higher percentage of the passing, so that we can, you know, get the funds and get this done.
Is there really a vote on it, or just consensus?
Just consensus right now. And if you look at this schedule, here's what has to happen. I just split it up into every six months, just so you all know.
Can I ask a question? When you get moved so fast through this? First question is, how much of the current $400,000 goes towards this actual street repair? And do we have a plan on how that $400,000 is spent each year already?
Yes.
Because that's where, if we, we need to be able to show why we're not being able to keep up. If it's $800,000 we need, then $400,000 is there. In other words, so that's one thing, it was one of my questions. The other question I have is, if you set these projects up that you want to put under a bond, what if there's some other way that those projects being funded, so that we don't have to wait till 2024, 2025? So are we locking it in? So if we're saying the bond is for this, and suppose by some chance we get funding some other means, can then that project be excluded? Or is it going to be tied up so that you get?
It won't be tied up. We could do it outside of this. So.
And the other, one more question. The other question.
I want to get you first, but if you ask me, then I can.
Okay. No, that's what I'm saying. I want to make sure, because what happens is, a lot of times, when you ask for something to be pushed on through, we don't ask all the questions in the front end. I want to make sure we get the front end questions. The other thing that my concern or question is, how much is it going to cost to contract with somebody like that reported company? How much money is that going to mean over these four years? And could that money be better spent than paying for a consultant to do another report? And that's my last question.
Okay. Since I remember your last one first, I'll have to go back to you first one again. That report company, I've used that before. The first time I ever did a bond referendum, I did it by myself. And like you killed, it's a ton of work. I didn't even know there was companies that kind of held your hand, walked you through the process, and did a lot of the work. Took a lot of time and energy. And then when we were doing the second round of bonds a few years later, I met them at one of the conferences and thought, where were y'all three years ago when we did bonds? But anyways, there, everything that's in here, that has to be done. These debt capacity, affordability, funding options, that sort of thing, they help us do all of that. As far as what we have to pay them that would go to other things, I will have to say, based on experience, whatever would be charged for them to help us with, it is well worth it to walk you through this process to do that. Not only do they help you come up with the funding options, the debt scenarios, get you prepared for the bond, they also, once the referendum is passed, they help you go through the process of issuing the bonds, get through the debt process. The entire thing starts to fit. It's well worth it. I haven't gotten a quote from them yet, what this would be, because we're at beginning stages right now, just to see, is this what we want to start the process and move forward with? You asked about the Powellville funding, like we're starting with 400. I believe that was your first question.
Yeah.
Okay. That $400,000 that we're getting first right now is not 100%. It's sent going to actual street maintenance and paving. We have salaries, it's the people that have to do the street maintenance that pay. If you remember, the last few years, we had moved at least three positions from Powellville into the general fund to free up some of those funds for more maintenance. We moved another one in the current budget that we're in now. So instead of having all six employees that are in the street department in Powellville, we've got three in the general fund in the street department, and they're still free in Powellville. And those salaries and benefits are still being paid out of Powellville funds. The other thing that's in Powellville is other maintenance has to be done. We buy street signs and replace any type of, well, pretty much anything that has to do with any sort of street and sidewalk related expense. If it's existing sidewalks that have to be maintained and repaired. The Johnson Street Sidewalk Project is being funded through Powellville because we got the grant from the state, but the other 20% is coming from Powellville funds. So that's in there as well. So the $400,000 that we're getting is split up into several different things. But right now, out of that 400, about $150,000 to $200,000 is being able to be used now for directly to street and sidewalk physical maintenance. No operational costs, nothing else to pass.
So what I'm hearing is, we go through this process, and all this gets passed, we throw a bunch of money at streets and roads and everything, we get them up to date. We have no plan to keep it up to date.
After that?
After that. The monies we have coming in, what you're saying now, the monies we have coming in isn't meeting the need that we have. So over the years, we've just got farther and farther, farther behind. So moving forward, we throw all this money, and we get called up. The town still has no plan, no, nothing to keep it up from that time on. So if the money, like you said, in Powellville is going down, 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 we're going to just get back in a situation where we're falling behind, behind, behind again, and we're going to start this process over.
Right.
So I mean, not being, not. I just, I just, you know.
I see what you're saying.
I understand what you're saying.
Or the future.
I'd like to see us come up with a plan if we do this and go through this process. I would like the town to have a plan moving forward in the future, how we're going to fund this to keep it up once we get it called up. Does that make sense? Because I don't want to get back, if we get, if we ever do get called up, I don't want to get back to the situation where we're coming here again.
Here's one thing that I can say to that now. The money that we're adding, allocated for so direct maintenance, you know, here, take two, one take, $200,000 each year. Once we get the streets up to par, where there should be town block, then it is just a lot of maintenance at that point. But your streets are where they're supposed to be. So really, the first couple of years, you might have to spend $200,000 each year on streets. They were just, or they've just been redone. Or if we do the $800,000, but it would all depend on what plan we set up, how we spend these funds. If we say, all right, we're going to spend the funds over a five-year period and get the entire town up to speed. If we did that, we'd be spending, you know, close to a million dollars a year, because I think what they presented was $800,000 over 10 years. So if you did it over the course of five years, we'd be spending just over $1,000 each year. At the end of five years, we got a town with every road is where it needs to be. So there's probably going to be some less maintenance during that time, because they've all been restored. During that time, you can probably reserve some Powellville funds. Put them back, since we're not spending this year, we might not need $200,000. We might only need $50,000 or $75,000. So that $100,000 or $125,000, put in Powellville reserves, let it build up. So then after the five years, when you start having maintenance on the roads from year one that were restored, you've got a reserve from five years, you've got half a million dollars sitting there that gives you a head start on into the future. That's just thinking right now. But I see what you're saying, have a plan going forward. That's good.
And I think attached to that, the fact that as we get all these new developments in, to make sure that they meet our standards and DOT standards.
That's one of the biggest things.
The roads that we're having to spend the most time on, and with stormwater issues or with paving issues, are roads that the town accepted that were not up to par. So I think that's the other key to this, is as we move forward, any of these new developments coming in, they have to be really scrutinized before we accept them. Otherwise, we get in a situation like we are now. Even how, even to the point of how good they look, you know, because you look at how new Spots Matters example, how good they look, they had sidewalks, they had streetlights, all had matching mailboxes, they had stormwater drains in, and. They had stormwater drains in and.
So worse subdivision.
Yes, it's, it's one of the worst situations because the appearance was everything's in place, but you couldn't see what was underneath that hadn't been taken care of. So that's, that's my main thought is as we move forward, one of the parts of this plan is that the roads come to us in that condition that they probably had to lose maintaining.
Yeah.
Otherwise.
Go ahead.
Um, I know they hadn't come up yet, but, and I do know that a lot of municipalities don't do this. But I think, um, Mr. Molly's talking about a plan in the future. I do think if we were to possibly doing a match, because there's supposed to be an amount of funds real quickly out of the match that we're doing, that I don't think we're doing. And I don't think any municipality does this in general. Um, Shaw may be one of the only ones in the whole state. But if you're talking about four hundred thousand coming in, that's about six hundred thousand more dollars. If we're just not putting it in pot, that could possibly add some context to some future funds that we've got available to see if we possibly start to, but not necessarily.
When the state set up the Powellville funding, it was set up, it was supposed to be a matching program for municipalities. And I sat through a, just happened to sit through a conference and it was the guy who was in charge of the state Powellville funding. And this, he basically asked how many towns in the room were over two hundred? Towns, cities, municipalities were matching at even fifty percent. And one person, well, there was like four or five that raised their hand for that. The majority of the room did not. Um, only one town matched what it was set up, which is it's, the Powellville funding should be a quarter of what you're spending annually for streets, maintenance and infrastructure upgrades. So our town, along with many others, we don't want to raise taxes, we don't want to increase anything. But there's not funding to do that. So other things become priority. Whatever your priority is, that gets pushed to the front, you know? It, it just depends on what there's funding for. So there's never been that actual match that it was intended to be through the state when they allotted those funds. So if we were to match at fifty percent, we'd be doing a lot better or even just match equally.
But then that cuts into the general fund.
Absolutely.
Which includes everything else that the county does. Since it's not required by the state, that's why not many people even do it.
It's a balance.
Right.
Um, ma'am mayor, that, this is one of the issues that is on the, the legislative goals. We're not the only municipality doing this. I believe all municipalities are dealing with this right now. And one of those things is creating a permanent narrative, fundraising for local infrastructure needs. So that is something again that we all need to make sure that we are advocating for that state level. We, we advocate to see if we can get more funding to help us take care of some of these infrastructure issues that we need. Because at the municipality level, we're stuck. And what we did to increase funding is if we raise people taxes, we're going to have an upside on the municipal revenue. And to go back to what Mary Warner and, uh, Christian O'Malley and everyone else were saying, I do, I think it's something that we absolutely need to do. So with the growth of the town and the way we just continue to grow, we've got to not help up with our infrastructure. So I think it is very important now that we do make a plan to invest in our infrastructure. Or it's only going to get worse and we're going to need to put more behind it. And I was in one of those, my neighborhood is not very old. They did a crack in the seal and oh my God, the street looked horrible. And I, I asked them, why is the street look like this? Because the roads aren't that old. And they said, my neighborhood was one of those neighborhoods that was about to be in the fourth, the current, um, standards. And that you were bored that were having, the other neighborhoods, you have to go to these standards. But that the streets they, they heal is bad. And you really couldn't tell actually until they did, still become bad, the streets look. And in my mind, I was like, if this is the reputation, how rest of the streets look in this community? We don't, we in a bad condition. And my street wasn't even that bad. My neighborhood wasn't even that bad. That was like one of the areas that it wasn't that bad. So I could just imagine how these other streets look. So I just think going forward is something that we cannot afford, not to do.
Ma'am mayor.
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, you don't have to say that.
I'm not going to.
Um, they, they mentioned people chase and box metal. But what's happening with some of these roads that are getting built further in the county? And they only require a, a different standard than the town, what those do. So that's the reason like Valley's Inn, um, they're down, well, those roads are not acceptable. Uh, even, uh, the Applegate Road wasn't built to standards. But the former town manager, Matt, they with the public work group at the time, out there and explained to me that they're in the county and they didn't build by different standards. I think anything that's in our MIA, we might want to consider making them, make to use that word, uh, to build our, our codes, probably not the town yet.
I, I will say just for clarification purposes, the, the county standards and the town standards are the same as the, as the state.
State standards.
So what's happening is we have a new team in, in place now the last four or five years where now all of the new annotations and newest additions are being required to, to the town standards.
That's, that's what I was speaking on.
They were playing catch-up on the older roads and the older streets. If you recall, Don Cisco had a presentation a few months ago, their silver is like thirty-five million dollars um, to bring our current streets up to a passing rate. Uh, I think they're currently failing, uh, the grade is failing, but if, to, to bring it up to a passing rate would be thirty-five million dollars. So that's the silver number that Don is having to deal with. And I guess we're trying to talk with the best, best methods to act to do it.
Yeah, I just think it's a shame they could build a two hundred fifty thousand dollar house side by side by side and put a road that's not going to take the pressure of the traffic. And, uh, what they're doing, they're not putting enough driveways in, people are parking on the sidewalk. Uh, especially in Valdezine, I get complaints about that all the time because I live out there. Uh, people are parking on the sidewalks and, uh, the big part has been on a few times. We take the right back to doing it again. So they either park on the street, on the curb or the sidewalk, or there are a bunch of cars taking across the sidewalk and driving. So they need more parking space. But I think people today have more cars than they used to have. Uh, I remember one, one market off driveways. Because you're fortunate to have not two or three or four vehicles. So, uh, I don't think that, that our routing codes are strict enough in, in that, in that area. Cause, um, I was approached last two, three months ago about the width of driveways or how certain width, we want to land there. But I can't do that way or that way. Have to bring that source to get that done. But I am concerned about the streets, uh, especially the new neighborhoods. I've not been up to code and I don't know what it costs going to redo it. But I'm thinking I'll have to come up, I'll pay to come up and we basically, I don't know. I don't really anymore, I'm tired.
Mr. Bear Pops? Yeah, um.
You know, you look at the millions of dollars from what Don Cisco's presentation was on street maintenance. You look at those millions of dollars and then you also look at the stormwater projects and they're in the millions of dollars too. Both of them. I think in the short term, you know, you're going to have to fix the roads to bring them up to standard. Because you're not going to be able to even put a plan in place on the long term until you fix what you got in the short term. And that's the way I look at it. Uh, and then going back to using Davenport as a company, hey, look, they're, they've got excellent and highly credentialed company. This is a time-consuming, heavy lift process that I don't believe can be managed by anybody in this town one-on-one. I know Drew doesn't have the time to do it. So you have to pay professionals to do this, especially if we're going to put two different sections out. We're going to put streets in, we'll park some wreck. I think it's, it's a win. Thank you, mayor.
One last thought, and that would be again, going back to what we heard from the, these goals were submitted by the league to the state. So they haven't been reviewed by the state yet, but we had an opportunity, um, we meet the delegation on Monday to, to bring this up as far as infrastructure needs. And it, it mentions, uh, you know, roads, water, silver, stormwater, parks being, in other words, it's, it's all the things that we can relate to the fact that it's important for not only economic development, but also quality of life. So I would like to ask that this be somehow included in what we present to the delegation on Monday because I believe there, there's probably going to be some funding that we might be able to get by tagging on what this has already been put out there. Uh, the other thing is I'd like to find out personally, and I don't know how the board feels about this, but how we could do the matching funds, if not the complete matching fund for the amount, um, fifty percent of the matching fund. But to do, to start now, because even if this bond is successful, we're not going to be getting money until twenty twenty-five, probably?
Probably the, the next spring, twenty twenty-four.
All right, so what will happen is you're looking at that's, you know, think of what's going to happen to the roads between now and then. And if we're patching and, and, you know, just doing what we need to do and we can't do it for all the streets. Maybe by adding those matching funds, at least we can show the state that we're doing what the original plan was. Because right now, if they look at us, they're on, they're on, again, if we've been doing what the original plan was, we're still probably the same boat, but at least we would be putting a good base effort. And they, then when we ask for funding, they would say, well, they've already tried matching the funds and they still can't come up with the amounts that are needed. I think it just, and, and that's the, the reason I think a lot of times when they give us money, they say match it. Um, you know, they don't have some accountability, come back and say, have we matched it? And the easiest thing to do is just take the money and, and use it and not put additional funds there.
Actually, we probably could say that we are in some senses matching it because we do have the Powellville funds and we also have a street department. We have just been the past few years moved three positions from Powellville to the street department. That was funded by Powellville. Because when I first got here, almost a hundred percent of Powellville was just for operations. Not really anything for actual street maintenance. So we have been able to shift at least half of the personnel from Powellville to the general fund, which is you could count that as matching funds or Powellville since, you know, you can't pay, uh, street salaries out of Powellville funding. So we have been doing that on, you know, since I've been here.
And I would sound like a devil's advocate here. Um, but if we had done it the right way at the original time, maybe privatizing the, the work that was to be done and its salaries wouldn't come out of Powellville. Because I don't believe the original intent was for us to pay people. I think the original intent was to get the work done. And I might be wrong on that, but if, if that is the case, then privatizing, just like we've done with, um, with the trash pickup site. That would then mean that that money would be going toward street repair and we would not be paying, you know, other things out of it. And I, I know they allow it, but my concern is, is that best use of dollars? Because we probably had to put.
Very hard to do that.
Yeah, the one thing we had to put, we had to put the salaries in there, uh, and justify doing that. And then do we justify if the streets aren't patched every year? Yeah, that's what I'm saying is I think when we're held accountable, we got to have, we've got to have that, something to say about how we've done that, how we, how we've done the street repairs. Because the question every day is, uh, just like the pothole that's on Main Street, you know? It's not our responsibility.
That's D O T, right?
This is why I said it's DOT, but we still being asked, why isn't it fixed? Why isn't it fixed? And I think that's where if we've got good documentation, but if you kind of look at it and they were to look at the accountability piece, what they'd be looking at is we're paying salaries out of Powellville funding instead of putting that in asphalt or weather. That I won't say anymore. And I'm not trying to be hard to get along. I'm just saying those are questions that we're asked on a daily basis. And it's, it's difficult to have a good explanation when you still have certain areas. And I will admit, some of those areas are areas that we inherited. They came to the town that way, um, and we had to catch up. And I mean, it's not, you know, when you look at the housing areas that we took in, um, we took them in in the condition that they are.
But I guess just that this will be, are we consensus to pursue for parks and wreck and streets? And with streets, that would also, we could include if, you know, based on our funding capacity, affordability, we can include some sidewalk projects in there. And then I do know that some street and sidewalk, um, increase and that can affect stormwater. So there would be some probably stormwater involved with that. But it all kind of works together, um, with the same thing. So at least the main two things we'd like to concentrate on moving forward, is that potential for bonds?
We have to, if you're going to call it a problem, you're trying to get a bond path. It's a recreation pact that we can now take off the regulation.
Does it benefit that?
It will.
Oh, well, I'll, I'll get to that. And if we go through the schedule right quick, and I just split it up to six months. This isn't in stone, but this is just kind of a general, um, chart of what has to happen. So if we decide to do this today, then probably sometime this fall or late in twenty twenty-one, I would start getting, meeting with the important company. I would try to have them come in. I don't know who was on the council the last time, Ted Colting, did a whole bond presentation. I love it, but most people thought it was the boringest thing in the world. But anyways, um, we can have them come in again and just say, here's what we do. Not maybe go over the, the bond one-on-one, but more along the lines of here's where our company does. And here's where the value is in that. So we can do that by this fall and then start the process of some debt capacity affordability and, uh, funding analysis. Then a year from then, probably at the, uh, board retreat next year, we would present the initial concept of where we are. Because it all starts with what can we afford? You know, if we do twenty million in parks and wreck and ten million in streets, that's thirty million dollar bonds. If we can only afford to say twenty million, then we're going to have to make some adjustments to what we want in that. We can still do parks and wreck and streets, but we have to adjust how much do we want to include in that based on our debt capacity. Then the fall of that year, you know, it's an ongoing thing. Uh, once the audit's complete, we've got the year closed out, we would update and refine that debt capacity in a preliminary plan of finance. Then probably board retreat of twenty twenty-three, we would present again, you know, here's where we are now. So let's determine which projects we want to see about doing for this. Because that fall will be the actual vote. And so that way we nail down what projects we're doing, how much we can afford. And we start promoting to the residents, here's what these bonds are going to do for us. Here's the actual, uh, parks and wreck program or projects that we intend to fund with those bonds. Here's the actual street sidewalk, stormwater, um, projects that we're actually going to do with this bond. Um, the other thing you do have to tell folks, we're required by state statute is whatever that bond amount is, you have to correlate that to the same amount of a tax increase. Like I just said earlier, one cent of tax is a hundred twenty-one thousand dollars. So if we were to do a twenty million bond, spread it out over thirty years and just say it's a million dollars a year to pay for it, that that correlates into, you know, a six cents tax increase, in other words. So we would have to tell the residents, not that we're going to increase your taxes by six cents, but you have to say, worst case scenario, your taxes, if you vote for this, could go up six cents. We're required to, uh, to divulge that information. But like I said, this funding strategy gives us other means of how to pay for some of this. It could be that we find matching grants and we're going to go over grants and stuff in a little while. Um, but there are other funding sources, sources so that everything doesn't have to go necessarily through the bond. But that is part of it. And then once you get to the actual referendum, there's a vote, the bond is passed. First thing we have to do after that, we have to, um, get a bond rating. That part's not on here, but before we can actually, um, start the project, we have to get bond rating. Or before we can actually, once the referendum passes, to sell the bonds, we have to have a bond rating. And that can take anywhere from three to six months to go through that process. So you go through S and P, Fitch and Moody's, and you get a bond rating. Um, a town our size, sometimes the very first rating, it could be that it'd be a B plus or an A minus. But I would actually shoot for a B plus rather than an A minus because that minus is just always a bad con. plus rather than an A minus because that minus is just always a bad connotation. You never want to be a, a minus in any day. So possibly we could be an A because if you look at that debt schedule I showed you earlier, um, in four or five years from now, the only debt we're going to have is, in the general fund, is a couple of savings. So that's how we can pay for some of this bond because we only have one debt sitting out there in the future. So, but that's all the things that go into this. So if y'all want to, um, pretty much give me consensus to move forward with this, then sometime this fall or late this year, um, I'll have Ad and Port come in and present, here's what we do. They'll probably even give you kind of a schedule like this, um, that they, uh, interpret. And then we would, um, at that part of time, we would also have a quote, you know, here's what that costs and that sort of thing. We would, um, get actual approval by council at that time. But is this consensus? Do you want to go this route?
Uh, and and then, just a question. Are there other companies that do this and should we be getting bids or should we be looked at even to include? I don't know if we did Vennels, Parks and Brooks grant, but are there, not grant, uh, bond? Are there other companies? Because I know this is going to be more than what we would normally approve cost-wise. I don't see it being less than thirty thousand dollars. I see it being more than that. So are there other-
And it's also probably a process too. I, I gather, or I would, um, state that you're being charged by sections of this.
That's what I'm saying is that-
Yeah, it's not all going to be one contract for everything. It's going to be, there's a contract for them just to do the debt capacity and and analysis. And then there's another one to go through the actual referendum process. There's another one to go through the actual-
So we're, we don't know what we're, we won't know what we're approving?
Well, then we present it to you before you approve it.
Well, I know, I know that, but that's what I'm saying is, before we start with them, as far as looking at them, which would mean we would be doing this this fall, are there other companies that do this same work so that it'd be a competitive basis and instead of getting it piece by piece by piece, we get it all at one time as far as the cost?
Yeah, there, I mean, there's several companies that do this and that.
I'm just concerned that, that current, current trend with what's happening with a couple of the other firms that we've, we've used for consulting or for coming up with plans, they do a plan and then we have to fund another plan or extension of the plan or an amendment to the plan. So that we're, we never really know, it's a moving target, how much money that's going to cost. So I think on the front end, if we could have, um, you know-
Right, I'll, I'll be getting that.
And that's, that's-
Well, before I do all that, I need to know, is this what you want me to do?
Is this, uh, is that what you guys, I'm leaving to the board now, just, I have no more questions.
May I, Mary?
Yes, sir.
Um, I would suggest that we have different companies come in and give a presentation. So we'll have some of the big firms, those that form-
Now, is that nothing you'd want them to present to you? I want to let me determine which is the best idea and I bring you the best one.
Like you're here in open town. Is there a problem with that?
Well, you're pretty much making a public bid in a council. I know that I would do that.
This is a, this is a service and you, it's not required-
You don't have to bid out services.
We don't bid out services.
Well, we need to know-
I would be bringing to you the best thing possible for the town.
And I, I understand we don't bid out services, but that's how we get caught up in paying a lot for services. That was, it would be better for us to at least have some ideas of companies that do services.
Any words from the other side?
The only thing I would say is, if, if you have several companies that are right here in Cumberland County or Oak Mills, that type of thing, then I would say, yes, that's probably the best thing to do. If they're way outside, you know, one service is going to be about the same as the other. I mean, because they have to follow the law. So I mean, it's, it's not, they're not going to be doing anything above and beyond that thing. So I mean, you're going to get the same thing from X, Y, or Z.
Service, the cost.
I'm talking, I'm talking about what they do and-
And what's the cost of matched service.
Right, exactly, exactly.
Yes, you, you asked about, or someone mentioned, who the Fable use. I know they've done a lot of work with that important company. I don't know if that, they did specifically the, the bond referendum, but they have, I was very familiar with the name in my top seat.
They are top.
Great, great group of them for it. And I think, we did bonds in Durham out there in 2005 and then, and they used that for it. They, they do all the, even, even there's a certain amount of selling it to the public that we can't do with employees, that they would do, the advertisement and the commercials are what we would do. So I mean, they, they have pretty good training.
And see, I think that's what this is all about. We thank you for that and thank you for, you know, the input because I think that's what we need to hear for reassurance that this is okay, having knocked out with the bond personally. Was there another comment?
No, I was just saying, um, I have experience with that for two, three, four companies.
Good, okay.
Remember, can you, can you give us a presentation without, you know, dollar amount or a few hundred dollar amount, uh, two or so other way? But it's public money, so, you know, because the public didn't be notified of all this and we get the notification.
I mean, if you approve the contract, this fall, that's going to be in the public meeting. It's like any contract that can be approved.
Because frankly, we would be talking about it as well, just publicly, contract that.
Anybody else with a concern on this?
Drew, I was just going to say, I think what Commissioner Legg is, is asking, it seems to be projected from several areas. The town is under very strict state regulations as far as purchasing is concerned, whether it be services or, um, anything that we do, we have regulations that we have to follow. Um, you guys don't always see all the things that go on behind the scenes and sometimes that's what takes so long, is because we have to go through a process. We can't just arbitrarily pick someone. Um, we have-
It's R Q process.
Yeah, there's an R Q process for all of that. And, and I've not worked with anybody at this town that hasn't followed it. And if we don't, Cindy will come looking for us.
Unless you all wave, it's not like you all wave the, um, wave the R Q process before we gather to finish, you know, the master plan. And you all can wave that, the mini, the mini book tag. You all can wave that and say, well, we want to go with that before we get experience, or we'll go through the R Q process where we evaluate their experience and then go with, go with the best company. So that's what, that's what that's explained. That is, by law, the minimum penalty, not everybody does it, but we should do an R Q process. And legally, that's what we're, probably, or we can wave the mini book tag and go with who of you all want to go with.
And I think this is key and paramount within the big video is that the education of our public and of us of what that process is. Because if, if we don't ask those questions, we don't get that information, then we're faced with the vagueness. And so now, uh, you know, the explanations, what I think, telling our story so that people understand what's, what we're doing. Just, not necessarily justifying what we're doing, but clarifying.
And I think what you said too, in terms of transparency, what Marco said, you don't get R Q, if Ad and Port ends up being the most qualified anyway, you have a stronger foundation to stand on because you went through this R Q process. You ended up with it. But through a transparent process, you actually did follow state regulations and we ended up the same issue.
Other comments?
Yeah.
Action.
Um, I'll go ahead and give my conclusions and, you know, the staff could go ahead and produce.
Okay. So you want, you want just consensus or what?
Just move forward with this.
So Commissioner Bell, five?
I said that thirty minutes ago.
Commissioner Edwards, paper to you. Commissioner Ward?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we're good, alright?
Good, thank you. It's, it's a lot of work ahead too.
That will be, I will.
Okay, so now we're starting to get into some of the things. There we go. Alright, and I know bonds and parks and rec projects and streets was some priorities for folks. Uh, there were some things where we got some feedback from y'all for the Board Retreat. Topics on certain town positions. So we're going to go over about five different, um, uh, court positions and then, um, police department salaries. So, um, we'll start with code enforcement. Uh, current year budget, we did some changes with the code enforcement positions. We added a new code enforcement position and we shifted it from inspection to planning under the umbrella of planning head and development department. So I'll let Chance or, um, talk to y'all some about the code enforcement and his ideas for the position.
In general, um, I have a, a Jewish community, code enforcement initiative to plan the number of, um, November. Um, I have a goal of growing code enforcement of, um, our office to top four officers. We had one with this movement, which was positive, fifty years, had a second position come on in January. Um, my long-term approach is a quadrant approach where we have about four code enforcement offices. We split the town up into four quarters and go towards the city people are assigned to those quarters. Um, by comparison, city that has about eight to nine code enforcement offices, I do think three or four would fit for us. And I do think that, um, as we continue to grow with a significant amount of these annexations and level of development we have, I do think gradually going up to about four positions will significantly, um, put us, put us in a position to at least, uh, be more efficient with code enforcement. We also have a goal of digitizing the code enforcement completely, um, talking to the chief building inspector because we're talking about all night permanent systems as well, so that code enforcement, stormwater, and inspection can all interface together to the digital. And so that's my long-term goal.
How many, I'm sorry, Mayanna, how many of these, uh, suggested positions are going to need vehicles? All of them are going to be in the room?
Probably each one.
Yeah, each, each one of code enforcement would require-
Do we have vehicles? Extra?
No.
No.
See, that's the problem I have here. We've got, we've got a director in the department, we've got a assistant, and the assistant has an assist, and everybody wants to be there. Why can't somebody be with the spirit?
Well, you've got, and you've got code enforcement going out, you don't need two people going out together. My personal opinion is, if you've got two code enforcement people, they're not doing what they need to be doing if they're going out together. They need to be going out by themselves.
I understand what you're saying there. I didn't mean it that way.
Or try, try.
I meant, the one, like assistant or assistant, assistant or working code, um, what commission are vehicles? And look at chief of that department, have his vehicle. Trying to cut back on the team.
Like your chance or just have a vehicle?
Yeah, I think, I think basically, looking at the five positions here, code enforcement and the town inspector are the only two that actually require-
Yeah, and they're both, they're both inspectors and they go in different directions. So the building inspectors have to have vehicles, separate vehicles.
I understand that.
Because they, they go inspect in different, like they do building inspections, so they go in different directions.
And to tell you what Melissa's saying too, with the nature of how it get operated, um, you have such a heavy workload because the more developments you have, the more inspection. So with the workload, you can't engrave a hammer right now and split it in half. So it's not practical to think they can go on a job together. Um, they actually are destined to leave a third person so they can split that load with three, which is the same ideology with, with code enforcement. We have, we had one person doing the entire city for the last nine years. We had a second person come on in January. So my approach in my term is to have four people simultaneously doing the exact same level of code enforcement for seven sections. And that puts us in a, a position to be more efficient with, um, so those positions would need-
I understand that, how that works.
What time frame you changing?
Um, I'm just going to be candid, immediately. Um, I know that's not practical in terms of the budget, but as soon as we can. I would like to see us grow at least one position every 15 years. Um, if we're talking about where we were two years ago, I have that as the second officer now. I'm not sure if we can fund it thoroughly for this particular, uh, request for the next 15 years. I would like to grow at least one position each year or at least have a short-term goal of having those four positions sometime in the next couple.
Now, I understand that. If you have three people, three vehicles, you can go a different way, a different amount, to get them or none. But my concern is we're going to end up having to have to build a parking lot behind town hall with the four vehicles. So we can't keep taking that parking spaces.
Well, uh, one thing I'd like to add too, not to cut you off, is, uh, typically, these vehicles, we're not, um, they're about fifteen thousand and you're keeping them for a certain length of time. So, um, I do understand that there's an expensive Ford, but I think you're getting, um, what you're paying for with the duration of time we're utilizing. Um, I do know that, I think, the second code enforcement officer inherited an older truck that we had. So I think we are promising of trying to see where we can shift some things. But, um, these aren't very expensive vehicles that we're getting in the duration of time we're utilizing. I think maybe in the long periods.
That is one thing we need to look at for chances for parking now, is the two trucks that is code enforcement officers are using now, that's one thing we might have to look at. New trucks versus a new position, some for the future too, because they need to replace it now.
I don't know who would want a big fifteen thousand, uh, any kind of vehicle.
Well, inspectors in the past have not gotten, uh, ever one hundred, because they've got four ringers. Not that they just changed, but they don't need a, a larger truck.
Commissioner, um, I think sometimes we had a tendency to forget how much our numbers are growing and they're expanding and annexing all the time. We're going to need more employment if we're, if we're doing it. And I think, um, it's not fair enough to, you know, I'm trying to go to all different areas that they need to go to. You know, I think they get a lot of backlash and comments that they don't deserve. So I think we need to look at the five picture.
And, and I'm, I'm an educator, so I just look at this from front of being an educator. If I enroll in, the students increases by five thousand years away from one of my department with the same number I was one of my department with, before the numbers went from ten thousand to fifteen thousand. So I think that a lot of times we are asking for stuff because we don't have the manpower, the key goes to stuff that we're asking for. So I, I think that this stuff is, is needed.
And I would say, not to keep elevating the point, but to add on to that, I think we have to understand this is impossible. I'm talking code enforcement, because that's my department, but because of the level of growth, every department we have is going to experience some-
I agree. I a hundred percent agree to that. Um, because I've heard a lot of department heads with concerns, not just them, myself as well. When we, you know, when I came in, I was one person trying to handle all this stuff. And then, when we get asked to do something and somebody's saying, oh, why it's not done? I'm like, because I got fifty other things going on. And I found out it's for some frustration there with some of the other department heads. It's like, they want all this stuff, but it's just me in here. So, um, I definitely want to agree to that and see if we can get some assistance with, you know, all of our departments, get some help. So I can definitely see where they're coming from with that.
Mayanna, I'm, I'm talking, so if your vehicles are empty, that's your four weeks, I just wonder how we're going to fund them. But we already talked about having to get bonds to, to fund the street funding and the subject of parks and rec. Uh, so who is going to be running the fund of this? Would be my question. Can anybody answer that?
Well, that's a good question. I mean, we want to do everything we're talking about today, but we have to do that balancing act of what can we fund? It's all based on our revenues. And if the revenues aren't increasing to the extent that we need new services, then we need to reevaluate our fees, taxes, the different things that we can increase the funding to increase our services to the level that we want to provide. We, I'd love to do everything in here, but if the funds aren't there, we got to make some changes.
Chris, this is just my opinion, just my opinion, but we've got some departments, like the Queens Department, that are really able to fund it.
We're going to talk about that in just a little bit. We're gonna talk about that in just a little bit.
Yeah, that, we go by, police department should not be directly, I say more drastically on the front for our police department. The police department, fire department, town manager, the first people that's all on. So we gotta make sure that we keep those, uh, positions funded for that, they're competitive and we're not using policeman or fireman or something like that to, uh, other municipalities because we don't have the, the pay rate to keep them here. Most people don't come to pay a job like a policeman or a farmer unless they love the area, unless they love what they're doing. We all know it's all about money, all of mine, all about money. But when you have some big softies, a firm that's gonna stay here, I don't care what they pay you. They may do it as long here sometime, you know, but I don't know any of those. They may, they may be there, but I, I guess, plenty of other positions that are needed, um, cause I know that still a lot of departments really need extra people. The town manager position needs extra position. And we talked about that several months ago, assistant town manager.
We'll talk about that in a minute.
And we don't have that yet, so.
And the, the current position we're concerned with is code enforcement and the inspection will be under our department to?
Um, then new and town inspector will be in the regular.
Right, that's actually a separate department. It's code enforcement to planning, but inspection department is still there.
So it is a consensus that code enforcement would be a position that we usually find that now we're dependent, that we would move to the next one?
Yeah.
Guys, we're gonna do each one of these.
Okay, well, that would be a question.
Yeah.
Sometime ago we discussed about, um, getting the trust of some, uh, colleges and all the people. Some, um, who were there to kind of, like grants, they, um, experienced it. And I know a lot of them will come and we'll work on that when you and I charge you eight, then until you actually give your grant, it was possible.
No, we're talking about grants, isn't it?
Yeah, I mean, that's why I spend extra money, quite regularly.
Right.
And you know, it's quite easy to do your, you know, actually we're getting, uh, a lot of this sources here that we did, it wasn't, we're not the only, that's our best, really. I mean, we have our resources to do that, but it's not like that.
How important are you with you?
Ma'am, ma'am, I would like, uh, to go through all the discussion of position and then ask for a consensus after we discuss all of them.
Okay, well, if there's no many reasons to deny something, I'd rather we do it as we go instead of, well, at least we discuss.
Well, actually, you don't really have to.
Just okay, come forward.
Approve or deny any of these right now. I'm expecting each of these to probably be requested in the budget.
Okay.
And then at that time, we'll see what we can fund as in when the budget's presented to you and you'll be given, it'll be given you in that, in that budget workshop. If it doesn't include things that you wanted to see in there, then you can ask questions and bring up at that time. But now, I'm hearing from everybody that, yeah, if the funding's there, you definitely want another code enforcement position. That's what it's about.
What about the town inspector, are you gonna cover that or, you, you think about some town inspector?
Now, the town inspector, and I know Ray's not here this morning, but we talked about this, cause he asked for one last year. The thing with the new town inspector, we have two. We, of course, he's the chief inspector of the, uh, department for the department, and then we have the deputy chief inspector, um, that's also a department. There are the two inspectors that we have, and they're, you know, got all levels of inspection, so they can pretty much inspect everything. And folks with those credentials are very hard to get. Uh, but right now to hire another inspector, you know, case study is, but we typically see that actual surge in growth. What we determined last year with the budget is that once we see that the development is more than what they can do, we can add a position either mid-year or something like that if it's already not included in the budget. We agreed to you and say, hey, all of a sudden we've got a surge. Say we approved several subdivisions and several commercial projects, all simultaneous, but they don't have enough hands to do all that, so we're gonna have to get somebody else in here. We can do a budget amendment to the, uh, budget, say we can hire another inspector. And the revenues we get from those inspections would then pay for that position, so it would fund itself essentially. But to hire somebody before the development's here, I mean, they could stay busy and they could do inspections, but we're kinda waiting on when we hit that next threshold of development that we need a third inspector. Uh, so that's, that's what we presented last year. Um, I'm certain they'll request another one this year, but y'all asked for this as a top point proposition, so that's, you know, where we're at with the inspector is, once we see the development get to the level that we need a third one, we will definitely recommend and get a third. So that's, that's where we are on the inspector.
There, there's also the option of, um, because we've had to do this in the past when we were, um, when we were looking to hire, um, we can do, um, individual contracts. You know, if we're, if we see that we do have a surge and, um, you know, we have a couple of people that we can reach out to and do, um, an individual contract with on a limited basis to kind of get us through that, um.
To hire somebody.
Until we hire someone. So it's not that we're gonna be, you know, in a, in a pinch, um, if we need to, so.
Cause here's the thing with, uh, the code enforcement position and the inspector position, you gotta think, it's not just salaries and benefits. It's salaries, benefits, and equipment. There's a vehicle involved, um, there's other things that go with that. So, um, you know, it's, there's, there's a lot to place into each thing that goes into the budget. So any, any questions about the inspector? Okay, grant writer, um, Mark is gonna talk about this position for a little bit, cause he's had a lot of experience in the past.
I'm putting that for you.
Oh. I'm putting him on the spot.
Yeah.
Okay, so part of, um, my research, um, on, on transportation, um, I've talked to a few grant writers, um, and I talked to a grant, uh, a grant analyst in Greenville who I've worked with. And, um, every grant writer I've talked to, I talked to, um, to four. And she gave me some great certified grant writers in North Carolina that have a pretty big track record of not applying for grants to get any money. Um, it's always best to go with a grant writer or a contractor slash company in doing these because, um, particularly with these, um, federal transportation grants, there's a certain way they want the language, um, a whole lot of reporting goes into these transportation grants, including logs, ridership, et cetera. And so, um, and we've always had, we've, we've always had better experience with, with going with a grant company in lieu of, um, a person, because even though there's a lot of needs out there for grants, there's really not enough to keep them busy. And I'll just go from my experience in Durham, we had two. Um, we had a grant writer in Parks and Rec. Um, you know, a lot of times they're like old five, and, you know, they come in with a great resume, they don't have that proven track record. Um, in contrast, when we've dealt with firms and, and contractors that do, um, they do grants, very, very successful, a good example is McGaddams, when they did, you know, of course, I, you know, we all assisted with the Park Tech grant, but that's what they did. They know the language, they know, they, they actually know the people. A lot of times, a lot of times the grant writers are working with the feds and they know, they know the people and they know exactly what they're looking for. And having looked at some of these transportation grants, um, I know not to be dangerous, but it's a lot that goes in there that you would need somebody that has, um, ten plus years' experience with dealing with these types of grants. So I would just suggest to you all, yes, you probably could get a grant writer, that's a guarantee without having to vet their track record and grant writing. But then, um, you know, we'd have to keep them busy with grants, you know, as far as finding grants. Um, whereas if you go, if you go with a grant company and, and get them a benchmark, uh, at least obtaining five to six grants a year, I think that's the best way to go about it. That's, that's where I see the most, the most success in time for this, so.
Right, me and Mark were talking about this the other day, and, um, we talked about if we go ahead and kind of vet some companies that are great at doing grants. We've used several in the past before, but right now we've used a lot of McGaddams. They help with the party grants.
Yeah.
They already are trained for that specifically. If we've got a position that's a grant writer, they're gonna have to go to every single training for every grant that comes up, just to know how to do this one, cause everyone is different in some way. But if you get a company that knows, they've got a different person already assigned to these types of grants. So if you're doing partner, Rachel's our person. If you're doing streets or stormwater, they've already got a person, they're already trained in that type of grant writing and, and helping facilitate you going through that process. Uh, Withers and Rattles, another company that we've used a lot in the past. We've not been using this much recently, but they've got a whole team of grant writers. If you just hire them for which grant you're looking for, and they, uh, walk you through the process. I've got two different people I've used before for more just finance related grants that I've used in the past, not here at Oak Mills, but we were looking for a, um, uh, what's the, it's about Gold Leaf. Uh, they're very versed in Gold Leaf grants and those sorts of things. That's what they do. And you just hire them for this particular grant, for this particular project, and they, you know, walk you through that process. So we came to a conclusion that what we would like to propose as far as this, as far as the budget's concerned, is we use the process of using some of these companies that are trained and versed in this for the specific types of grants that we're looking for, instead of hiring a position to do that. And then if we hire somebody, Jerry, they're gonna want a vehicle. So they can go drive within the process.
And again, all the pieces that, um, like Park Tech and some of the more, um, planning and, um, design related grants. I'm familiar with recording, so recording is another piece, cause you know, you're gonna have to do a report and actually get your, if it's a real versatile grant, you're gonna have to get your, your, your draws. And there's a certain way they want those reports. Um, I'll be honest with you, I don't know the first thing about how DOT or how feds want their reports as far as getting that money for transportation. But again, these people that apply to these grants, and, and what I'm told by, um, Cumberland County, people from FAMCO, there are specifics that you have to do to get your money as far as these transportation grants. And if you don't have somebody that knows what they're doing, then you're not gonna be successful in getting your drawl of the money. So that's another piece of getting somebody's experience. They know all those reports to look, how those travel laws should be concerned, so.
And for example, USDA grant, or I will call it grant, the finance that we've got for public safety, there's companies that help facilitate that, but that's one that I thought, if I can do this, I don't need to hire somebody to help. It would've been nice to have somebody to facilitate that process, but that's something that I realized, you know, I've got the expertise to do this myself. It's a lot of work, but we can get it done, and, and we did. So, uh, at times where we can see it's something we can actually do in town. Um, you know, we can do that too and not have to get the outside help. But that's something that each department has, they're looking for stuff. Chancer looks at grants all the time, he does it himself.
Yeah, I, I would, uh, go back to Mark's comment of about four percent. Um, I, I've done several grants, but, uh, I'm not as good as, as McGaddams. But I have successfully gotten some grants, but I've forgotten to do it on my own as well. Um, and, and, and in-house, you have to understand too, that grant that you're writing that is very significant in terms of being undertaken in tact while you have a regular work going as opposed to individual entity. Um, but it's up to you guys to make the decision. We have capabilities, um, but you'd be looking at someone who's so focused to be on, um, approaching these grants as opposed to someone trying to do something that's big and quality, um, of an agreement.
Well, that probably brings, bring you on to, um, the name of the firm that we had escaped. But a lot of the firms that do grants are also lobbies. I know they're not for the lobbies anymore. They were also instantly going to state and going to, cause I know the grader was trying to get a title grant. But they, they, they know, they know the people to go talk to, they kind of give you that extra push and might get you the money because they know the right people. So that's other benefit of having a branch, right? A lot of those, a lot of spoken, have, have made some made with in the lobby, in the lobby, the lobbyists, um, arena, so they know how to go about it and, 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 and get access for your specific municipality or genre.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I've never been opposed to a company, and you all probably can remember last year I said that a company, boy, it's a grant writer. So I, I've never been opposed to having a company. I just, I do believe that people will end up paying, the money that we pay will end up, could end up paying for itself in investment. It's the same thing that I feel with that Park Tech's time to include, like if we did some allowance of baseball fields and things like that up to far, I think those things will end up paying for themselves. So I, I do not oppose to that. I, I think that as a town of our size, we probably need to do that with a company. Uh, they did that for the pathways, people paid for Spirit Grant through, um, in Fayetteville or Cumberland County, they, they went out to a company and they did it as well. So they don't get paid unless they, you, you get their pictures up and on the money. So I've never been opposed to a company, personally, company, something. I just feel like it's something that we get invested in.
Do you have comments on that one?
Okay, assistant town manager. Um, this was something that was asked for a few years during the budget. And the position was approved, but it's yet to be funded. And just to kind of give you an update, um, I've been kind of acting in this role for the past couple of years. Uh, doing a lot, I know, hopefully y'all know, it's not doing a lot of things that aren't necessarily financing as the lady, um, on top of the regular financing duties. One of the reasons is, you know, I, I like a challenge, I like, you know, to do other things. And, uh, it also saves town money, that we don't have to fund another position, um, that sort of thing. Melissa might can, uh, add to that a little bit of some of the stuff that I've been doing, but hopefully, you know, it's fit enough that y'all can, I guess, see some of the projects that have been completed. Um, there'd be some big ones, some small ones, some internal ones, uh, different things around Town Hall that don't necessarily get to the lane of other departments. It's really one more that this isn't really something that a particular department does, but it still needs to happen. Melissa said, Jerry, can you handle that? Can you make sure this is done? I'll jump on it and see how we can make it happen. Sometimes I do have to pull from other departments, I mean, I have to work together and get things done. So I've been acting in that capacity. Y'all would rather see something different, you know, give your feedback, but that's what we've been doing probably the last couple of years.
And it's worked quite well. Um, there's not been a time that I haven't asked Drew to help me with something or, um, you know, and no questions asked. I mean, he's, he's been phenomenal, um, and I just can't say enough about, you know, he, he never complains, he never, he never gripes about it, he never, I mean, just absolutely fantastic. Um, and does the research and makes it happen, um, without question, um, very supportive. And, um, it's worked very well for the two of us. Um, I felt like when, you know, I'm not there, um, he's, you know, he's been the go-to person for most of the department heads. Um, you know, it's not been something that we felt like we had to advertise, um, but, um, it's worked quite well. Um, budgetarily, um, you know, assistant town manager, uh, you're probably looking at like starting salary for, you know, probably eighty, eighty-five thousand, I can't remember what's in the budget.
We put in the request the last time we had, we put, we started ninety.
Ninety, so, yeah. I'm not sure that you can fund a separate, and I'm not really sure that it's needed, um, at this particular point. Maybe in, you know, maybe in two or three years, maybe in five years. Um, but it's certainly, you know, up to you all. Um, I'm leaving, so it's not, you know, it's not my decision. Um, prior to my retirement, I was headed towards making an announcement that, you know, um, I was gonna.
We're talking about doing the actual title.
Yeah, we were gonna make it official, but I'm not gonna, you know, that's.
How many, how many, um, in your current department?
My department, there's four.
Four, four.
Are you saying that good hiring a assistant town manager, we just give him a little pay month or something, or title?
He's, he's pursuing.
And not him continuing that position?
He's, he's, he's been compensated for the work, the extra work.
And title need to be financed, registered.
It's funded with that.
It's not that big of a.
Trust me, I'm not gonna make, I'm not gonna make somebody do extra, you know, extra.
Well, I think you've done a great job with Drew's, I keep picking him, and this guy that's gonna be here for him coming up. It'd be up to him if he wants. If he wants to recognize Drew, or if we need to name Drew.
I do have, I do have a suggestion, since the, if the Town Manager was saying to him right now he's not necessarily needed, I think that you should get your Town Manager here and give a big input on if they need somebody and how they want to go about their process.
Right, right.
Right, and we're talking about that, for this, because we talked about giving me the title, it's free, but I told Melissa, it's like, well, if we're gonna get a new manager, let's let.
That, that needs to be the new, the new Town Managers.
They have a whole different way of doing things, and they just won't be able to finance, and I'll just be fine.
Is that compensation already included in your total salary, or is that an additional salary? Because that would make a difference too, I think.
It's just part of my salary.
So then, so then, wouldn't it be better for us to go ahead and name him Assistant Town Manager? Because we know we're not gonna probably have enough funding to fund a full position, and we're already paying for the compensation of the work he's doing. Wouldn't it be better to go ahead and name him in that role? Yes, sir?
I mean, I can wait until the new manager gets here, they, they have that.
That's my fault. That's my fault.
All right, that's fine. Police Department Salary Study, okay. The, I believe this, the years that I got here, we were in the midst of the salary study, which was five years ago now. And it took a year, those that probably remember this, it took another year to get that complete. And I believe we finally got completed when Melissa was made manager, and we pretty much said, "Give us what you've got, and we're gonna finish it ourselves." So we got information from that consultant, and between me and Melissa and Tish, you remember that? We, we finished the salary study ourselves, because it was something that I think was a three, almost a two to three year process that we, we finished it. So we came up with an idea that instead of doing every department all at once, because that's a huge job, and you almost have to have a consultant in order to do that. We said, "Let's try to do it more in-house, and we will split the departments up in sections, so that each year, you do another group of departments, and it's over a four-year period, so that pretty, and you just keep on rotating, so that you know your department's gonna be looked at every fourth year as far as the salary study." So, it's been, I guess, three years since that one's been done, so we started with our first one this year, which was the Police Department, they were the first one. Next year's Fire Department, I think the year after that is probably Public Works and Parks and Rec, and the year after that is all the admin type positions, like planning, store walk, art, finance, and administration. And then it starts over with the Police again, because that'll be four years from now, and we'll be kind of put in. So, Tish and the Chief have come up with some information that they want to share you, share with you about where we stand now for our Police Department salaries. And the main thing we concentrated on was officers' salaries, because that's the main one as far as retention and who we want to keep. So, however, y'all.
Well, I think, the sheet that Drew included here, first thing I did was definitely did some research through the league. If you can see, and based upon our population and town size, if you can see with the hiring range, where we fall, which is, we're at about thirty-nine, six-one-eight for hiring, we're pretty much in a really good spot, if you can see based upon other towns, that's our size, with the hiring range, so, with definitely, I don't see, and talking to Drew, where we have to do anything major with our salaries. On the HR side of things, are one of the things we did with our recruiting side, of course, we got to meet any of those systems where we'll be able to recruit from a large variety of other sources and people, which, you know, that's been working very well, so we have people applying from different states and all of that coming in. So, not only that, you know, we have a very attractive benefit package, a hundred percent paid medical, dental, and vision. We added the tuition assistance program, our longevity pay is very attractive based upon other towns. And not only this, I was able to pull some information from the City of Fayetteville and, and the county as well. In the City of Fayetteville, the police officer's starting pay is at thirty-eight, so even with pay, and looking at, based upon my research, we are, like I said, we're at a very good spot. The county actually, with their pay, it might be up just slightly higher than ours, but the employees have to pay for their medical with the county, so then again, we're still looking at the fact that we all have the employees, a hundred percent paid medical, dental, vision, which is a huge amount of money. So, now, you know, so we're, like I said, we're at a good point as far as our marketing and HR, recruiting and the onboarding process of things, so, I believe, if, if, you know, if you all have any questions, you can look a little bit further, but we are at a really good place for hiring, and where are we at far as voluntary lives?
And just to make a comment real quick on the sheet here, Tish gave me the information from the league. The information from the league was actually from ten thousand population to twenty-five, but I took it and narrowed it to fifteen to twenty-two, because this were representative of the size of our town, because you had some towns a whole lot smaller than us and a whole lot bigger than us in this process. We narrowed it down, and we were, you know, toward the higher end. And also, the league, I agree, did our average just for police officers, so their average was lower than ours. So I put, this is the actual correct average of our police officer salaries as of the last paper.
Mayor, Mayor, Chief, do we have any vacancies?
Yes, sir, we sure do.
And what recruiting efforts, this will go to you, are we using to recruit the police officers?
Um, I would like to.
Okay, you go further back, okay.
Uh, yeah, Drew's handing out our freshly invented, reviewed and approved contract for hiring new officers to where we can actually put them through the Basic Law Enforcement Training Program. Prior to that, we did not have the capacity to where we could bring them onboard as an employee while they go through school. We had to, we could only recruit people that were already certified.
Right.
This allows us the opportunity to bring them on, and page two, item six, actually breaks down the cost of bringing somebody on, it's very enlightening, it's very expensive to get a recruit in, trained, and into field. With that, there's an agreement for, in exchange for us putting them on payroll while they go through school, they are obligated to a certain length of time in, in service to the county. Now, that doesn't mean if they don't find a better job, they can't go, it just means that if they leave before that period of time is expired, then they are responsible for compensating the town for the expenses that were paid out to them. It's the same type of agreement that City of Fayetteville uses, I'm not so much sure about Cumberland County, but we were about the only ones in our geographic area that was no longer, that was not hiring people and putting them through the program. So that's got us up today, that's gonna be a very good thing. And just as an example, we've already got a number of applicants that are not certified, that's already expressed interest. I want to say it's nine, ten, which is a good thing. Now, clearly, we would not put all of them through at the same time, there is a cap on that. For obvious reasons, if I hire, if I hire Joel Charter to put him through the B-Low Academy, that spot is locked up until I either graduate B-Low Academy or I fail out. So, don't want to limit our options if we have other qualified candidates, it's just. The, the candidate field right now, in our particular moment in time, is exceedingly competitive. A good qualified candidate pretty much can have the pick of what they want to pick. So this is part of a multi-step process, it's a lot of help, and you need resources, a lot of help to do, a lot of help to manage, and the core attorney who had to review this type of thing. It's giving us a leg up to be more competitive, and to couple that with our base salary, it makes us a lot more marketable to your good quality candidates, so that's a good.
Okay, so the, the same hiring rate would be the same, if we hired someone new and then put them through the academy, we're paying for that as well?
Yes, sir. And we've already gotten with Fayetteville, Fayetteville Tech, the local B-Low, they, they are going to increase screening our candidates so that we don't go through the hiring process, that line increases for the written entrance and physical test, make sure they can meet state standards. That way, that happens before we ever make them a job offer, that way we don't hire a candidate that can't get past that first starting gate. So, that, it's, this is not.
Yeah, that was my follow-up question, was who, who's gonna do the screening, was it gonna be you or people?
We've, we've already done, talked with the director out there, she's been very helpful with that process. So we'll wrap it that into our, for this particular part of the hiring process, we'll wrap in that into the sequence up there.
What's the increased funding for using this, this method?
This method, none.
None?
Every position is already a budgeted position, this is just, if we look at a candidate that you think is going to get a good investment, and we're going to put this through the B-Low Academy so that they can provide service for us, this kind of locks that in. But that position that that candidate is being considered for is already a budgeted position, so the money's already there.
Okay, thanks, Chief.
You're welcome.
Well, what else is there?
I think the starting salary is the same as Tish, and I think the grading is great, I think it's tough. It's more rewarding to y'all than Fayetteville and Cumberland County, I want to give you the training for that to get their employees. I mean, it's that great investment, the only problem I have with it is longevity. And like, if you have a starting salary of thirteen, thirteen thousand, you might have an offer in there ten years, and he's there all making that out.
But, and that's an excellent point.
And if he, if he gets thirteen years in, he's looking for his retirement, so he's been there all these years. He goes over here at that one and say, "Well, I can make ten thousand dollars per year when I retire, if I don't have to spend that pay."
Yes, ma'am.
I think a pay scale for the generally people, these long years, should be like that now.
Well, we, we are actually working on that. One of the things that City of Fayetteville has, which is a very excellent program for them, is that they have a, what you just brought up, they have a dedicated paid scale. Whereas as, we're, we're very competitive off the gate, we're absolutely very competitive. Where, City of Fayetteville is an example, since I came up, where they catch up to us and pass us is that they're, it's been a little bit since I actually looked at those, but at the two, four, and six-year increments, they have built into theirs an automatic pay range to where their officer would be. So, say I am a, I am a basic entry officer going to Fayetteville, and I can see I'm starting out today at this pay range. If I stay in the same pay grade position I'm in, I can calculate out at my two, four, and six, whatever's on their right at this moment, where my pay will be, and my exit increase will be, et cetera, and so. And, like on the document you have here, or have there, our starting, mid, and topping is really good. Where they give us is that in-between, as an example, I can bring in an officer today at the entry rate, and he's working fine, he loves, he's been working here forever, which we all hope. And then next year, or two years past that, I bring in another officer at the entry rate. So, the officer that has two years on this guy is, in a lot of instances, gonna be making almost the same thing. Because like I say, my first guy I hired, he's gotten two cost of living increases, okay? And that's awesome, that's great, we appreciate those. But, so now, the starting salary's been adjusted to reflect that cost of living. So now the guy coming in today, he'll be making the same thing that this guy that's been with us for two years is doing. And so where the step plan comes into place is that it keeps that from compressing up on each other, and that's more incentive, so the more you're, the longer you're with us, the better your compensation, which as to what you said, goes, goes better towards somebody's, excuse me, the hiring process.
What can we, can we do that thing for you?
We're, we're, we're working on it, and I've already submitted some really rough drafts to Drew. It's, it's a fairly straightforward process, but we're still working out the bugs with it, to make sure that when we finally present a product, that it's a good product for you guys.
And on top of that, we also have, we've switched it to annual now, but merit performance pay, which wasn't annually before, it was every other year, but now, based on your performance, when you have your evaluation, we do them every January now. This was the first year we did every single employee come up in January. So, where an existing employee moves up in this scale versus a new one that was hired, because the cost of living would increase this minimum, now, your performance pay gets you higher in the scale, and depending how your rating is in your performance evaluation determines how much of an increase you get. So this year, the budget's had two percent was the max that you can get if you got, you know, the highest level of performance. And if you got just less than the highest, you got one point seven five, if pretty much you're just getting by doing your job, and that's it, you got one and a half, and if you're doing less than a three or four, you're gonna get increased. So if I've been here two years, and I'm still making a higher rate salary, it means I've had two not so great performance evaluations, and yeah, a new person coming in is gonna get the same as me, because I've been doing a good job. So depending how you do your job, how you're evaluated by your supervisor, is how you grow within this thing.
You know, the way I said that, to do this, that would be your super content, that would be your easy super content. That would say your performance put you in a certain amount of.
Right.
Okay, now I have some employees telling me that they've done a trick job, and all their task performance is pretty great, but for some reason, there's a disagreement between supervisors and employees, and so they're not getting that this year. So how do you.
I know there's an avenue to contest it through HR, if you disagree with your evaluation, I'll, I'll remember what that process is.
Yeah, you can, you can submit a grievance process through, you know, you have a process for evaluations. I actually don't even, I don't think we have any, we haven't had, we haven't like come here. Not about the evaluations, not for the ones we've recently.
Right, there, there is a box on the last page, doesn't it say, "If you check this box and sign it, you're agreed to the evaluation, if you don't do that, then you need to submit something in writing."
Yes, I had a procedure this year through evaluations.
So, if anybody's saying, you know, "Hey, my evaluation doesn't match up to what I think I've been doing," there is an avenue for them to address that, and it's through HR, so they need to use the process that they have.
Yes, so it ends up not being necessarily a recruitment problem or a retention problem?
Uh, yes, the short answer, a, a experienced officer right now can pretty much walk into another department in their hiring process, and if they get hired, which as scarce as qualified candidates are right now, they can increase their pay sometimes to five, even ten thousand dollars, depending on what qualifications they bring. The fact that we haven't lost more officers to that is. The fact that we haven't lost more officers to that is very impressive to me. Because the officers we go are doing, they just had a phenomenal job with the resources they have. I've lost officers to Cumberland County, surprisingly none at Fayetteville. And I've lost them to departments, Charleston, North Charleston, and up into the Rollator. And they've all been good qualified candidates, and they can pretty much go wherever their talent's taken them. But when they leave, they're taking a lot of investment with them that in order for us to bring back to the table is going to cost us a lot of money. That, that's where that money comes in. So if you have more incentives to keep them at the table, it benefits us all in the long run. I hope that answered your question.
I do have another question. It's not necessarily directed at you, but one of those, but other lead initiatives is racial equality. There's not, municipality is not talking about this. I think that if y'all don't know where this is going to come in, I don't know if this is something that you all have. I think that some type of racial equity that already came across everybody, it would be, it's good, it's needed. And I don't know if that, that's one of these things that we need to be able to delegate about. This is particularly North Police. But I think it's like every, every initiative, every lead we have, everything, this is something that keeps coming up. This is something that we're not talking about. I think it needs to be addressed. And I'm not just saying that toward you, Chief. It is, I just think that that's something that is, that we did, something that we need to address.
Was it last year, year before, we updated our personnel policy? Year before last?
That we did what, true?
Updated our personnel policy.
Yes.
We, we have very good benefits here. Thanks to y'all approving personnel policy that we, I think it was year before last.
Yeah, two years ago.
Yeah, so that's a thing that we can offer to employees. If it's not dollars in their salary, they're getting very good benefits here. Like Tish said earlier, if they're in the county sheriff's department, where we've lost a few too, they're paying for some of their health insurance. Oh, really, they're not paying for their health insurance? We covered a hundred percent. And there's things like that that don't necessarily translate so much as a budget-type thing, where we have to increase salaries. If we increase our salaries, then all the benefits that are based on that salary go up as well. So we've tried to make more incentives that aren't such a get-to-the-budget, but benefits the employee needs. And that's across the board, not just this.
So Chief, what makes Cumberland County so much more attractive than us, Steve? You saying like our benefits are better and all of that, but they're going, I feel, to Cumberland County? What makes Cumberland County so much more attractive than us?
Again, the short answer, they're bigger, they have more, they have more opportunities for somebody. We're a smaller department, our opportunities only go so far. Now, I have big plans down the road, but those aren't here yet. There are steps to get to, get to there. So for somebody coming in right now, say, I want to be in some type of specialized position. I want to be a K-9 officer, I want to be a crime prevention officer. We've got a K-9 officer from Tennessee that does great work. But it's very expensive to keep and maintain a K-9. Training, continual training, vet bills, food, appropriate vehicles to transport. Those are all the things that, you know, go into having that asset that you don't normally think of. You just see the guy get out with the dog and they go do their thing. There's a lot more that goes into it. So we, we're fortunate, we can afford one. We probably need more than one, but we've got good relationships with the county and the city to fill in that void for right now. But if I'm a guy that wants to be a K-9 officer or get out, that do good, there's no opportunity for me. So they go to where the opportunity is at. If I want to be a homeless advocate, I think Fayetteville used to have an actual team that used to go out and do that. I'm not familiar if they still do it. I apologize. But if that was something I wanted to do, because we have a lot of homeless folks in our community, I just don't have the staffing to dedicate somebody to that full-time. We do what we can, but it doesn't get the attention that I feel it needs, okay? But if I have somebody that wants to go work that, they're going to go to where the agency that offers that opportunity is. And so that, that comes into play a lot of times. If I'm a career-minded individual and I want to work my way up through the ranks, that's an awesome thing to do. But in a small agency, there is a cap on that because there's only so many positions. And nine times out of ten, somebody gets into one of those positions, they're not going to be leaving at any time in the near future. But the, the timeframe between promotional processes in a small department is excruciatingly long. It just, that's the physics of being in a small department. So if I'm somebody that wants to go somewhere where there's more opportunity, I'm going to look at my Fayettevilles, my Cumberland County, my Fort Bragg. They offer great opportunities out there, and your Fayetteville. I've not lost anybody to that under my term, but under Chief Hodges, we lost two people to out there. So it happens. That's why you look at putting together the best package you can to keep your employees where they're at. And sometimes you can offer stuff, sometimes because of physical distractions, you can't. Just like we did a conversation with human resources. You know, we're never, ever, ever going to have the pockets that City of Fayetteville can't come with. It's just, that's a doubt. So we try and compensate for that with offering an environment that gets you to where you want to be in your career goals, to the extent that we can get you there, if that makes sense.
Mayor, I got one. Yes, Chief, do, do we compensate for adding credentials to a position?
Currently, no.
That could be an avenue of opportunity.
Yes, ma'am.
To compensate for adding credentials?
Actually, certainly certain certifications we do, we do, they do get credit for.
Well, yeah, uh. My fault, my compensation.
Yes, yes, we do. We have something in place.
During college?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I forget, that's still a new one for me, five all the way.
Yes, but at certain times, like if it's a cert in general, like we ain't have, every time a firefighter get a new cert, we don't do that. But if they get a special cert, or if the town clerks get, if Jane wants to get another certification, we do have a budget we set each year where the supervisor has to submit, even Parks and Rec, I think there's some trainings and certs that they get. You can submit, I think this year it was two point five.
Yeah, we're doing two and a half percent for certifications and increases in promotion.
Okay, yeah, this is not required for the position, this is added value to the position.
Right.
That's what I'm looking at.
We have a place in the budget, if there's a certain, not every department that does it, but I ask for them to, if they know they've got an employee that's up for a new certification during that budget year, I ask them, let me know so I can go ahead and have that two and a half percent in the budget set aside for them. So that if they get it during the year, they add the two and a half percent. Since it's all in that as opposed to our personnel policy, and it's not in the budget, then I have to come up with a budget for that. But if you know you've got a staff member in your department that's up for a type of certification in that budget year, I prefer that if they would just let me know, put it in with their request, and that I can make sure it's in that budget. But if it's one where they don't know, I'm not sure if they're going to get it or not. It's like, well, let's hold off it. Because if you don't know, then we don't really have a budget for retention.
I'll give you, I'll give you an example. When we bring on an entry-level officer, okay? Once they get through the process where you give their packet back from the training center, says they're good to go, you can swear in, and you start their field training process. We've looked in with a trained field training officer, okay? That field training officer is not getting any extra compensation for training this training officer. I think that's what you were referring to.
Yeah.
They go murky there, but I think that's what you were referring to. And no, at the current time, we do not compensate that. We, we should, and it's an incentive for somebody to be a field training officer. Because when you train somebody, if they go out and do something wrong that results in civil action, that chain of responsibility goes from the individual officer, the training officer, the department, the training program, et cetera, and so forth. So there's some risk to getting a training officer. Right now, we compensate that. And if I'm misreading that.
No, no, you're definitely, you're in, that's the wheelhouse I was looking at. And I think when we're talking about, you know, place out, we're studying this year through, that's something probably we need to really look at on the retention piece. Because I see what you're approving pieces, but I think the retention piece probably needs to be looked at as well.
Bill, it's going to be a big retention.
True, true that, but let's look at the individual officers as well.
One, one approach I'm taking from COVID wasn't just since I've inherited a couple of months, is to budget for the continuing education program for them. Because what it would take to declare from where she is now to a Level One certification is very, very minor cost. But on the back end, she now has incentives to move towards a certification. If we have something where she can get two point five, it's a great budget. So just what I'm building internally, incentivizing my staff to pursue it, you know, it will get some incentives back in, which is the end of the way of trying.
And that lays into the performance evaluations.
That's exactly.
The very last thing on performance evaluation is three goals you have for this employee for the next one.
Yeah.
And so you list those out, and one of them could be, I would, you know, a goal for you is to take these classes and get this certification. And then the next year, when you're doing that review, you can kind of hold them to that. If you take those classes, I put the money in the budget, you didn't do it, you know?
Yeah.
It can either still be a goal, you can, you know, knock them from a five or three on that, or say they didn't get a certification. And they do, it's like, you know, hey, you're going to get a five for, you know, because you didn't accomplish one of the goals that I set out for you on top of that you got, and then you're increasing pay.
One, one comment I want to make, I think it's good about this new police recruitment, our training recruitment. And I think it should be for all employees. I know, and I go back to my experience in education. If we, if the county paid for us for any kind of additional training, and the understanding was that what you were doing is you were going to stay with the county. So like, for instance, on the front end, if you don't pay me to become from just a clerical position to a town clerk position, then I'm agreeing so that that position would not leave us because they had been trained, it could go somewhere. Not necessarily for more money, but because they could. And I think that's the, that's the tie-in to it. Because I know Cumberland County schools, when they, they offered for you to go get your PhD, and they would fund it, you signed an agreement that for four years, you would serve an administrative role. So if you didn't, and what you had to agree was kind of like this agreement, you had to come back and say, all right, I'll, I'll pay back for the cost of my training. But I think that's one thing. And the other thing I was going to ask this, Black, is do we have any kind of agreement? Or do we work closely, say, with workforce development, or the old unemployment, what used to be done for unemployment security? Do we have any kind of workforce?
Yes, before COVID hit, we were working with the county, I believe they came in. I'm currently working with Federal Tech, who's going to be, I believe in April or May, they're going to be bringing some students over specifically, it's going to be public works in Parks and Rec. I think they have about stu, ten students they want to have coming in to do like maintenance work. So for like sixty hours or something like that, and we can look at, after, you know, after training them, those are ways we can look at possibly hiring them. Because those are jobs we have a hard time filling. We have a large turnover rate there in the maintenance department. So I briefly talked with Lamarcos and Dawn about it, and I believe, you know, they're on board with it. So that we are looking at some avenues to recruit there. And like I said, that, that's one of the avenues that.
What I think is unique about that program, as I learned more about it through our Tier One program in the county, is that for six months, they pay the rate of employment that that person would get if they were hired.
Yeah.
And if what happens is if you did hire them, you had six months of training and, and their own job training, and then when you pick it up, you're paying the salary that you normally would pay.
Yeah.
And I think, so that gives you six months of work. And if they don't work out, then situation is, we've lost nothing because we, you know, the person's moved on. Where sometimes, you know, in six months, people will, for whatever reason, won't stay with us. So I think that's a, I like that, I like that plan. Because what it's helping is those people that might not have opportunities to, to get a job in those levels.
Yeah.
I think the add-on, maybe want to say, that's a perfectly busy work. They have not only paid for, paid the town six months of that present salary, they paid the certification for the person, training for the person, even on the workforce. There's a very extensive program. They're trying to get people more into their program. And it's an incentive to us, should we entertain hiring somebody, they're paying the salary and they're paying for that person to reach, to threshold, uh, pay, pay required, it's during the season.
And that might even apply to some of these, now that we have an agreement.
Right.
This might be a position that could come through that program for an eligible candidate that might not seek it more because of, you know, concerns. That's why just with this agreement is an excellent tool for recruitment. But it also means that an obligation becomes on the person. If I don't finish my training, if I don't do what I'm supposed to do, then I, I lose this great benefit that I have. And I think that's, that's the buzz.
Yes, ma'am. I just want to ask you a question. I've had several calls here lately on like, if the research area would have a drug enforcement, um, position there? Are you, is this something you're getting into, or?
What would have a drug enforcement?
On drug enforcement?
Yes, ma'am, that is something that we're already doing.
We are working on it.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Currently, the bulk of that falls under lieutenant summer, it's in this division. And I can tell you, they are very active in that, to the extent that three guys can do that, if that makes sense. So that, they are working on this stuff. And I'm familiar with the concerns you're talking about. But, you know, it, sometimes it can.
You know what you're talking about.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I know you, I know you all ready to take a break and everything, but I've been listening.
Yeah, yeah.
This is your main.
Well, I, I've been listening to a lot of discussion on this, and I just had some concerns. And they say, you know, they're taking like a group of departments every year and doing that. I don't know if they're paying big money for the townwide pay studies, because the mid-paid studies is a, a way that we pay money to employees they're making. You know what I mean? So I, I'm not giving that. And I know you said.
We're not paying you, we don't want to do that.
Yeah, I know. Y'all are not, you're doing it in-house. And I've heard a bunch of good things that we, we're doing, you know, the merit raise thing, the piece that's based on, you know, merit raises, two and a half cent increases for certs that sit beside the budgets. That's fine for upper level and police department, fire department, you know, upper level, Parks and Rec. But while we're talking, the people sweeping the floors, the people out there cutting the grass, they don't have opportunities to go get certifications. So other than the merit-based raise, how are they going to get certifications? Is the town providing educational opportunities to go get these raises? I mean, we're going to talk about, the biggest way in a town this size where all employees know everybody is to talk about one department and base your discussion on one department, and let those other departments think that those employees are going to get a raise and get something that we're not going to get. And that's the biggest cancer in the town. You go talk about the round, and, you know, people, people don't like that. I've been in that situation. I've burned a mug of gold in my whole career. And I've been working, been my whole career. And that's just what I'm, what I'm hearing. And we do a lot for the employees, but I, I have concerns about the people who don't have the opportunity to go get that. Like when we had the sanitation department, what kind of certification are they going to get driving back to the trash truck when we had that, to get a pay raise? You know what I mean? The guy that's out there cleaning the toilet or running the laundry? Are we sending him to Federal Tech to get degrees in, you know, volunteer management? I, I don't know.
Actually, I just handed Lamarcos a, a lot of classes from Federal Tech that actually, when I was walking the park a few days ago, they came up to me and say, hey, what can we take? You know, you know, I want to get some certs and see what I can be certified in. And he actually just got like a twenty-page list of classes from Federal Tech with, um, different kinds of certifications you could take in, um, maintenance and, um, just HVAC classes. There are some certs at Federal Tech that you can take. So some of that's going to be on the employee. the employees and their initiative to go out there and see what's available for them. But we are able to, like I said, I'm bringing it to Lamarko now, I think we're looking at maybe having some computers and things set up at parks and rec in near future, and, um, so we can provide them with it. Those are definitely things we're looking, we're, we're looking at. We have had some discussions-
And I just wanna, I just wanted to be across the pool with all of our town employees when talking about, because just like we're talking about SERCs, and I know from this change, I don't know how many certifications police officers have to carry, I know they have D-levels and state certification, I don't know what else they require. But I know the fire department, to be a firefighter, you've got to hold about seven different state certifications. Each one of those certifications has upgrade training within you. Um, so that's a lot. And I heard somebody say, I don't know, but they don't look at the fire department SERCs for raises. So if you're having, if you're gonna pay one person to hold a state certification, which you wanna overlook another department because they got to hold more than one, is kind of what I heard. And I just, I'm off for the courage to get up, not all of them to get you paid.
Yes, I understand it's a requirement for them to have a SERC, you know, on a daily basis. Um, that's different compared to someone going to get a certification, um, like our inspectors who have to study for like, I think Kenny said he had to study for-
I'll give you a prime example. Uh, chief men inspectors have to have a level three off of this, but Clara's a perfect example. Clara was the, uh, um, administrative assistant at inspection, and she transferred over to code course. Since January, she's already got the provision of level one certification and code course. She has a year to get that, but in my budget, I'm actually requesting for us to pay for her books. So with them, I can offer her something, and that's not a high-end executive level position, but she's transitioned from a very low position to possibly being in a position to have a level one certification. But she'll get credit for getting that certification, but there's a difference between her and Ray. Ray has to have that level three to get the job. So I think, I think where's the minimum, I think that's what Marty is saying, where are some creative ways we can provide some incentives to someone-
I got these ones, I got these ones because it's something that I'm looking at my guys. So, um, the eighteen-hour OSHA certification, no test, it's a certification that they, they sit in the classroom, and they're my guy, and, um, I think we went to class for like, um, a few hours for like two weeks, and we all had an eighteen-hour, that, that carries fam, so I don't have to ever go to OSHA training. It's something my guys need anyway, because, you know, I want them to be accountable for knowing, you know, um, what, what parts they need, um, you know, extreme heat, et cetera. So that's one of the trainings that I'm going to put in my budget, so that they can all sit remotely in, in, um, my rec center and go to their class, you know, virtually, and then they'll get that certification. And that's something that I would definitely look at getting them to increase, because I want all my guys to be, um, OSHA certified. And that's just specific for maintenance people, it's not really in parks and recreation or therapeutic recreation, but it's something on the maintenance and, um, building maintenance side that they can get, and, and, and I, I think it should count as, and make certifications as far as maintenance, because what they do is, you know, specialize as opposed to athletics, so, so. And it's something worth mentioning too, I mean, that guy wants to say that OSHA can get OSHA certified, they can also-
I think in the background, Marty, there is something that we can possibly pursue to create some incentives, if we do it in a sustained way.
That's fair, and I'll be very sure. I, um, what, when we're talking about doing with tier one and what we were talking about doing with economic development, is possibly partnering with Federal Tech to actually have some, some kind of trade academies or something, in hotels for all citizens. And if the employees can be a part of that, if it can happen, great. The two individuals that I assisted approached me and asked me for help. So I was not going to one or two departments, I was approached by two people that personally asked me for some help, and I gave them the information. But what we, it came out of a conversation of trying to see if we can do a partnership in hotels to help high school students, to help anybody, and if the employees committed to that, why wouldn't we wanna assist them in being better and being great, um, and getting more credentials and getting more certifications? So I just, I just would like to-
I think that's a great idea, because we think about the partnership you're talking about, it's not opposite. So when I say let's think outside the box, let's get creative, these aren't initiatives, they are initiatives hold a very, very high value on the back end, but does not require a incentive on getting them to us on the front end. I know we've talked to the council of government, they provide, um, grant assistance for Federal Tech with its trade school game. Not only could that be something that's beneficial to the citizen, the employee would be able to do that as well. With Mayor was talking about, sometimes you have cities where you start to be busy, you have to locate, you know, if you take this, it's small business, that's what I'm saying, you have to locate the business. Um, City of Atlanta has, they'll pay for your, they'll pay for your certification, you know, how long it takes, in years, you have to work those many years off on that. So I think we can get creative to do things that doesn't kill bank or drive up general funding, but we can really start getting really, really creative with some of these incentives that we can do, whether you're tied into the evaluation, or you're tied into the incentive factor higher, can we do some of the things where you're talking about just maintenance worker, that is his primary job, is we do, what are his avenues of advancement that he can pursue as well?
Ma'am, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I think bottom line of what we're talking about is here, the, uh, we don't need mutation to do in a public sector, do it. We want people to qualify stormwater, parks and rec, uh, whatever the case may be, to get, to get people in that are qualified and those positions, start them out at a reasonable salary that's agreeable, uh, but not over our budget. But sometimes, a town our size, our budget is a little lower than bigger towns, but some people say it's a little higher. But I think that the town staff has done a real good job managing our money over the last few years, done a great job with it. I guess it doesn't make much sense what I'm saying, but we need somebody that's qualified in positions, no matter what it might be. Only those people that work in those departments know what extra things that we don't see that you have to have in, in employees. Thank you, ma'am.
At this point, we're to the end of the, uh, town position subject, and the request is that we have a consensus to move forward with the proposed plan, fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two budget. Uh, the only thing that we sort of talked about is possibly just removing that grants ride position and putting it more into a position of, of funding for, uh, specific-
Contracted.
Contracted, contracted services.
And that'll be by these departments that requested for-
Right, so we'll put kind, we'll put, I'll put contracted services there instead of an actual position. I said, we have a consensus that this is what we're going to move forward on, and after we do this, then we'll take our fifteen minute break.
Let's take our break, Tom.
We have a consensus, Commissioner Ray?
Yeah.
Commissioner Ray, person, right, and then, so let's take our fifteen minute break. Right now, what is, it's actually ten fifty-three, so let's say we'll be back at, um, eleven ten?
Yeah.
Does that sound good?
Twelve in museum, and they probably will tie together a little bit, so, um, I know your, your book is two separate things, but, you know, they are kind of, um, tied together in certain aspects. But just so we know, twelve o'clock is lunch, so even if we're in this discussion, we can stop, eat lunch, and pick that up again after lunch if we have to. Um, but again, I wasn't thinking we could stop, but lunch is at twelve o'clock, so we do have to stop at twelve.
Can I make one announcement too, before we, um, they were, the fire department was going into the lake today to, uh, retrieve one of those wayward buoys, and, um, then they, I think they were gonna try to fix the, the, um, the buoys and then the, um, the dam, um, the gate, there's something, um, they can't, Dawn couldn't get the gate completely closed, so they were gonna take a look at it and see, um, I'm not sure that they were gonna be diving down really to, but they were gonna try to see what they could figure out. Um, if they can't do that today, at some point in the future, um-
We get Chancer in his stupid gear.
They are, they are gonna dive down and see what's blocking it, maybe a piece of wood, maybe something simple, but there's something blocking it where they can't get it closed completely right now, so, um, just FYI, in case you-
All right.
In case you get a bunch of phone calls.
I, I wanna give, I think, a four-year-old that, they told me that the pin worked, when they were losing it, the pin was lucky.
Yeah, we're, that's why, as they replace, as they're fixing them, they're trying to replace all of them.
Yeah.
So that's, right, right, yep.
Well, that could might get them-
Yep, yep.
Okay, so, um, let's get started with Thomas Oakley, and Thomas Campbell, Ocean Chapel. There it is. And, uh, Chancer is gonna be heading up, Jim London and the chief are outside the door, but Chancer's gonna be heading up this discussion.
I just told him.
All right, what page am I on?
Uh, page nine.
Nine.
Yes, back to page nine, uh, talking.
Next slide, I'm starting.
All right, and just so you know, in your CIP, the information I got from the church museum, I just got this week, but I completed the CIP three before, so it may not match up, the numbers may not match up exactly what's in the CIP, what's in, uh, being presented, but that's okay, because the CIP is live document and we can make changes to it, so.
All right.
All right.
Um, speaking on the, on the back page of, uh, page nine, um, as it relates to the Thomas Oakley Chapel, as the Hopelessness Historic Committee submitted a proposed budget for the upcoming fiscal year totaling forty-nine thousand three hundred dollars. Um, they also completed an overall master plan, and I'll speak to a little bit, a little bit, that outlines activities and priorities over the next three years, but the budget that they submitted, uh, for the forty-nine three hundred for this fiscal year, um, appears to concentrate all on the Thomas Oakley Chapel for the upcoming year. Some of the proposed work that they're including in this proposal is, um, hiring a consultant, preserving the existing things, windows, uh, roof with carpet, things that they, they do have items in there that need additional cost estimates, they're working with Dawn on the bathroom installation, uh, design of the, uh, what they're calling the parish house garden areas, the plaza areas where the parish house used to be, um, and things that makes like a security system. Um, as it relates to the consultant, five thousand of the twenty-nine thousand three hundred that they're budgeting for is to hire a consultant to, uh, pursue a landmark designation for the chapel. Mary Ruffel Hamburg came down on the second to do a walkthrough to possibly give an estimate on what it would take for her to do the nomination, and she has indicated that she can do it, um, for, under the amount of their budget. Um, as it relates to the master plan, um, as stated before, these activities are projected through the year twenty twenty-three, um, although, like I said, um, the forty-nine three that they currently have is slated for the church. Um, the five top priorities of the overall master plan over the next three years is tied to the landmark destination of the chapel, Old Mill Bayes, the restoration of the chapel and Tracey Museum, the store walking trail, and the reinstatement of their committee as a commission, which I think we have talked to, the board has, um, um, instructed them to pursue, um, possible several avenues, you know, for that. As it relates to the staff recommendations, um, based on what they're requesting from us, it appears that they would like for the board to approve the forty-nine thousand three hundred for work to be, um, I guess for the next, this coming fiscal year, and they would also like any additional funds needed for the full, um, I guess, renovation of the church, including the bathrooms, things that may simply add to that. And they would like to see Tracey Museum and walking, um, tour earmarked for the year twenty twenty-three. Um, if you turn on the, the page behind the staff report, it is their entire master plan outlined, and they do have a cost estimate that they did submit that breaks down the individual cost of what their earmarking for the church. Um, I do have the official, um, um, more detailed budget, they did have a budget that listed, and that's how Drew was talking about the museum will lead into this presentation, because on the backside of that, even though they have the museum and the walking tour earmarked fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, they do have the items listed that they would like to possibly concentrate on, at that point.
Yes, can I, yes, um, Chancer, from here, you're saying of the, um, chapel of the Blue Walkin' Carpet? What, what's the, what is placed?
Um, I think they want to, uh, have hardwoods, or I guess whatever serves-
So that would be a separate cost then, right?
Yes, and they have that broken down as well.
Thank you.
As we as thought of that group, um, what they're trying to do is get this chapel for it to be visited by tourists or used by people who want to have weddings or something, but right now, it's not up to code, uh, too useful, let's say, of guns having a bathroom inside and everything. And some of the other work has already been, they've built it, but it still needs some, some work, uh, like Chancer talking to carpet. Uh, it's got beautiful carpet in it, but it's outdated now, and nerdy, won't stand up, and so forth and so on. Uh, I don't have a problem with budgeting this money, uh, for this political library today, because they're attempting to use the money completely for, for bringing the building up to standard, for if we can use it. So, if I can be of any help, please feel free to ask, if I can answer, I will, if I can, I'll have a chance.
Okay. Um, what is the estimated completion date on that chapel and museum?
Um, they don't have a necessary set of completion dates, they're just telling, uh, us where they would like to concentrate the fiscal priorities, but one thing they did indicate that, um, the consultant is gonna advise us on what exemptions will be granted to us with the nomination, but their, uh, committee tells us they would like to at least wait until that nomination has been, um, secured for doing any of the work. Um, but they have ironed out a specific, um, um, completion date, because I do think once we take what they're requesting now, and then work with public works to talk about how much it would possibly be additional work, or work right up that would have to be done, RFP and things of that nature. So I don't think they have a specific completion date, but this is a, a lot that they've done, and I would like to commend that committee, they are hardworking, very, very diligent, and they are moving toward something better than-
I think it would be done this year, though.
Um, I think it's all in to know how long the, uh, the consultant is gonna take, if we can get some, uh, definitely-
The dates in there on page, um, where the budget's listed, it's got completion date from May twenty twenty-one. Um, my question is, what do we budget for this current year, as far as the amount of money that was there for this current year, and the things that we can do, why don't we do them? And we know that we can use a portable, portable toilet if need be, as long as there's a bathroom provided. The other thing that I believe, and I might be incorrect, and I had to quote this, but I believe that they have a date that they accept the proposals, you go for your first hearing, and so like, it's, everything could be presented by, say, September, and then they have the committee in October, and then November to state for the, the designation. So the process, it probably six months or so to get the study done and all the paperwork. We should have Gordon Johnson's report for the structural analysis and stuff, that would need to be done again unless we don't know where that is, that Gordon Johnson, when he did the facilities thing. That report is what is part of that, um, plan, and then- And then if you're, you know, as you move through those steps, um, it is time consuming to get it done. So I don't see that designation happening until probably, if at all, by next, maybe, maybe by January twenty, twenty-two. And I might be wrong, but you need to find out that timeline because having been through that with, um, another home, I found that, um, you know, the wait time, and they have specific dates to have hearings. And I don't think they do it for twice a year.
That's why I kind of basically said that we, uh, the completion date, because they have a completion date, maybe this year.
That's what I'm thinking, is if there's things that can be done that we've got in the budget already, I don't have much money there.
The math that's in the budget in the current year, I believe, is like, it's eighteen-three or eighteen-five. And that was to do some socket replacement, some weatherization on the outside.
I thought we could finish painting it. The paint that they get finished when they did the steeple, so that outward appearance looks there. I thought that was part of it.
It could be, I don't have that detailed, but I know it's some out, outside weatherization.
Cause I thought that we, I thought this.
Doesn't include any of this.
Yeah, well, I thought last year, the thought was that we would have it so that it could be used, um, and then wait until we found out about ADA compliance as far as what we need to budget for, if we had to add bathrooms, or if we could just use where the events that would be held outside porta toilets.
And the people I was just saying, I do agree that some of the stuff we can't pull out, like taking the pussy off the evening, moving carpet, that stuff we do right now. Um, but there are certain things that I just would think that you would need to wait until the consultant determines the bathroom.
Well, I suppose, that one, that's money we didn't want to put in there anyway, the bathrooms. Cause we were looking at ways to get, even if the bathrooms were separate building. And I think we talked about that with Jerry's part, was the bathrooms being a separate building and not having to do anything to the church. But I'm just wondering, we got this church in two thousand twelve, and it's been there that entire time. Two thousand fifteen, we had high hopes, things were gonna be done. And here we are, two thousand twenty-one, and we haven't opened the doors except one time, and it was very successful. And that was, um, the service that was held there. And they did, were very pleased with using the outside porta toilets, if you recall. So I'm just thinking, we need to do something, you know, even, I'm not sure, cause I haven't checked lately. We worked turning the lights on last year during the holidays, so it was lit a little bit. Um, but I, I think we need to, we got to, we, we showed nothing for this year.
Yeah, ma'am mayor.
Yes, sir.
If you look at that picture, that's a very good looking building. And there, although you can't see a lot of stuff that needs to be done, but what they want to do with the committee is to bring some of this stuff like the lighting and flooring, time appropriate, uh, to keep you home and take you look for the, uh, historical reprieve, uh, part of everything, if you're in the area, that would become a building. In other words, you have to do it with time-related articles to, to keep with the historical value of the building. So, they're working hard, they just can't move forward until they get money. Uh, budgeting to, to help them out through next year.
Ma'am mayor?
Yes, sir.
All right, Chancer, here we go. The chapel is already on the national register, is that correct?
It is listed as a children instructor, it is not a landmark.
Is that a yes or a no?
No.
It's not on the national register? You're saying no?
No.
Why? Cause I've got documents that says it is.
Documents you have said that it's listed as a children instructor. We have emails from about a week ago from the state saying it's not nominated as a landmark structure. Which is what the consultant told us on the same, that she's coming to possibly pursue that.
Which brings me to my second question. What added value will the consultant bring to the chapel as a landmark? What's the added value?
What she has indicated to us, if you recall, uh, the main idea of the nomination was to see what particular exemptions we could be presented with that would not necessarily circumvent ADA compliance, but the ADA compliance is directly out from the back. So if you can't get those exemptions through the nomination, um, or if we can't get those exemptions through the nomination, then we would not have to actually put a bathroom attached to the church or inside. Um, there is some, some information Chief Paul Reap asked us that tells us it's a conditional grant, but that's what's coming back. But there isn't a significant amount of benefits outside of the possible exemptions tied to either.
We've spent a lot of money in past years, the mayor just alluded to it, on the Johnson study, which I have a copy of that and the companion study with that. A tremendous amount of money that we've already spent through consultants on not only the chapel, but the parish house when it was there. So, I mean, when I look at this five thousand dollars, I look at it, that's five thousand dollars that can be invested in that chapel repair.
If, I think I'll, I did not argue that, but these are the requests we made. So I'm only conveying to you what we live at the side of the board now. They just had the last meeting where, um, the chair wanted them to possibly put the five thousand for the museum. Um, they voted and keep the five thousand dollars in this budget for the church. So, I'm not saying that I'm defending or justifying what was here. I'm just reporting that this is what they're pursuing and what they have voted on, which are what they're paying for.
I, I just don't see the added value. I'd rather spend the five thousand on repairs, but, thank you, mayor.
The, the first I had was with the Gordon Johnson report, so it's done. And we had to be able to come in and do the work on both buildings at that time. That report, we were, um, maintaining it. Um, and I think his report was, was maintaining the entirety of that building. Um, and the only thing that we questioned upon his report was he wanted to shorten some of the pews, um, to make it so that wheelchairs could fit in there. And we, we, I think through conversations decided that, uh, the wheelchairs could go up to, all the way to the front. We weren't gonna cut the pews, we were gonna, you know, keep it like it was. Cause we didn't want to, we didn't want to change the inside of it. I'm just wondering, we got that report that also gave us what was, we actually bid out the work. So I'm thinking if you could go back and pull back and forth. And then the other thing that concerns me is, this is not going to be an income-producing structure. In other words, what the money we're putting in it, we've got to justify that money. And we have, over the past years, from the, the Johnson, Gordon Johnson study, to then the, um, the other things that we had to do along the way. Uh, and, and plus the period of time that it sat until we had acquired it, and we had to go in and then do the winterizing and that kind of stuff. I'm just thinking, we've had another year go by, and what could we do so this could become a more viable structure for the town? Um, and.
I do think, I think from my understanding, because this committee wasn't in place when the Gordon Johnson study was done, but that conversation about the wheelchairs, I think that's what led to the conversation about possible exemptions you could get from ADA.
And I, yeah, that's what I'm saying, is I believe that what we could do is go back and look at that study because that study actually did, had, had already looked at the, the structures underneath. It had looked at the rafters. I mean, as well as I can remember, um, it had broke down what had to be done so it would be safe and usable.
It's comprehensive, so it's a very comprehensive study. We could possibly go back to the, uh, Gordon Johnson report to identify the stuff we could do now to get it up without having to possibly.
Right.
Ah, now, now we're there.
I just, I just personally would like to see us be able to do something with this building sooner rather than later. And also its infrastructure that, uh, nothing more, and I believe this, and Mr. Holland and I went to, um, the New Bern meeting.
Trent Street.
Yeah, we went to.
Main Street, Main Street.
Yeah, Main Street, we went to that meeting. There was a, a church that what they did is, once a week, they opened it up, and you could go in, and you could meditate, walk around, uh, and they had a volunteer there. And it was kind of neat because that was a much larger building than this, but it was just a, a, a place you could go. And then they did have it so that you could rent for events if you wanted to. But the thing was, it, it, this became part of, um, town. And just, it wasn't just something that was there that people questioned, why we haven't painted trim? Now, I'm asked oftentimes, why is the trim painted? Why don't you fix the front doors? And those, I think, are things that are not that expensive to do, and you're not changing anything. You know what I'm saying? You're taking that white trim around, and just like you did the steeple, you were painting it so that it gets done. We're not messing with removing the windows, we're just painting that outside trim. Uh, that's, that's where I, that's what I'm concerned because I do believe, uh, this is a benefit for all of us to get this, this building particularly completed. It took us a long time to get the building actually turned over to us officially and legally, so.
There's a desire to use it. We, we, we've already been getting requests for it to red. We get requests to do weddings at the lake all the time. They always ask about this building. It's my understanding, once it's up and running, it's gonna be ours as a reservation today. So, if we can get it up to par, then it will be a benefit and, and, and a revenue back into, back into the town.
Now, another thing, now, let's not cut you off. Uh, some of the ideas, they want to open it up during Old Mill Days. Um, how the committee typically does the Old Mill Day reunion, they want to see the children in the church. They want to, uh, I think they were trying to, uh, pursue, or Christmas, having the lights on and things like that. So they have ideas on ways to just have it open, um, during some of our events to make it more accessible to the public. But it does sound like, with the general insistence I'm hearing, is to pursue, what can we do right now and basically see what we gotta get out of this Johnson, Gordon Johnson report? See what work we can do immediately, um, as opposed to more along.
Um, if I heard Commissioner Bill Friday, I'm, I'm in agree with him. I don't, I don't feel like to do that, a consultant right now, to pay a consultant five thousand dollars for something up there. I agree with taking that money and putting it into the building rather than paying a consultant. I too would like to see the building finished. Um, I had hoped that it would be done, uh, into this budget here. Um, and take that money and, and, and go ahead and get this project finished, get the building opened up to the public, the youth. If we got a, if we got a full concrete pad and permanently put some porta toilets out there, a handicap porta toilet, a regular one, whatever we gotta do, you know, town staff can pour a pad out there. There's plenty of private, um, renovation companies throughout the town that would love to get this work to do. I, I'd like to see, I'd like to see this, the church and the museum both finished by the end of the budget here. I mean, we, we budgeted money for it last year. I'm just, I'm just kind of curious about why, why, and maybe I need to be educated, but why it's taken so long to keep this done?
What, what's left that, that needs to be done to open us to the public? What does the chapel actually need?
From my understanding, the glaring thing, it's how the building goes, and that's the bathroom. And that's the only stair cruise in, or not. All the other stuff can be done over the weekend in terms of painting, they, they don't. You paint this building, you move the crews, you do all these other things, but you do not have a bathroom that is compliant ADA and not open.
Can you, can, can we not use handicap porta toilet?
Yes, so if we're gonna go in, what can we do now? And we go on the porta johns and things that I mentioned. That handle, that piece, that puts us in a different position of being in the week. But again, I just want to stress to you, I'm just reporting what I have been instructed to tell you.
Well, I know that, Chancer, but this ties back to Lamarcos.
My understanding was when we, when we had that temporary, I, I just want you to double check on that because my understanding of it, when we did that temporary, Ray checked on it. And the state building guy told him that was fine for that one event. To have the temporary, to have the, the porta johns out there, but not for, not to open up. So I just want you to double check on that, that's all.
In the Gordon Johnson plan, you had to leave that building and go over to the parish house to use bathroom.
Yes.
There wasn't gonna be a bathroom in the church. And so in the building that we went to, one of the buildings that we went to in, um, New Bern Chapel, they had, in the back, they built that building that was in very back, if you remember, Mr. Holland. And they had a bathroom, but that wasn't even handicap accessible. It was just a bathroom built on the property.
I think that's because it had that historical designation, so you.
Now, now, tying to what, uh, the mayor's talking about, I want everybody to be practical here. Um, what Don is talking about is, if we're gonna do a bathroom that's not connected to the church, you do something in that plaza area, you incorporate it with heritage park and things like that. But you do want a separate building, it's a little bit, a little more elaborate. I'm just gonna be practical here, if I'm going to a wedding, I don't know if I'm using it. But if you do something that's a little bit, that's not connected to the church, it's a little bit more elaborate, it may tie to the, um, the story of the context, but that was one alternative. All I'm saying is, we're getting one set of instructions from the store committee, and I'm getting a completely different set of instructions from the board. We're trying, as staff, we're trying to find a rhythm around it because one option is a separate structure, the classical bathroom. Other options are consultant possibly pursuing nomination, but that's not the decision.
If you had, if you had a separate structure, I was in that Heritage Park plan that had a separate bathroom structure.
Yes.
Then it could, couldn't it be serviced for the whole park? So then included in that, and then, and then you can make the bathroom and look like a building, but be, um, part of the whole plan.
See, if you do a, if you do a, a permanent structure bathroom, it's not gonna be open to the public twenty-four seven. It's only gonna be accessible to the folks that rent that chapel.
For the rental.
It's for the rental. And this ties back to what Lamarcos was saying. He's already given requests now to rent the chapel. So that's the reason I'm asking, what, what is it left that needs to be done to open this up? To get it through ADA compliance and inspection?
I would say the only thing that would probably be, probably would be the determination of the bathroom. If we're moving, it sounds like we're moving towards doing separate permanent bathroom on the parish house site. And I just, if we're really, this is what the direction we're going in. The rest of the work is probably done very, very quick. But those are my things, like painting, restoring, uh, the same, that's what I'm thinking. I'm making those as ending. Again, only goal was the determination of how we would attack ADA compliance. The movement, central, that's the thing.
So you can take that five thousand and put it toward the second, second structure.
Mayor, I agree, I agree with what, uh, Commissioner Bill Friday said, but how, how, I mean, how much are we looking at? And how hard would it be to go ahead and, and, and get the money? If they had to tell you that general fund, something, get the museum and the church done, and budget this upcoming year to build a separate structure for the bathroom on that property? If you want to make a building up here to relate to the church, you can do that. But I, like you said, I mean, we're, we're turning down rentals and stuff like that, people want to have weddings and, uh, you know, that's, that's revenue we can be banking back off of that building, but we're, we've been down here past for about four or five years.
How do we address the thing that Chancer brought up where the committee is saying, this is what we want to do, y'all are saying this is what we want to do? How can we get those provisions on the same day?
That's the limit, because while we're, I'm here and here, you want the museum by the end of this fiscal year, the committee is telling me they don't want to look at the museum by twenty-three, twenty-one, two. That doesn't mean I agree with it. But if I'm telling them that you want priorities now, they haven't looked at the museum to determine what it is.
That's like, Jared, you could tell the committee.
The board tells the committee, this is what you did.
This is what we, this is what we.
Their advisor.
Well, this is for this board, huh?
But, but I went, their advisor.
Nah, they're, they're just advising what you have to do, I was thinking.
Right.
But at the end of the day, we have the same goal, we, we all work together, we all have the same goal.
Tell them to get the. Oh, well, I'm done, but the, it sounds like the committee wants to make the chapel a priority, get that done, and then focus on the exemption.
I, I think what I mean to it, you guys are the decision makers, they're the fire. So just because I'm presenting what they are requesting, if the pulse of the board is to go back and say, look, this is what the board wants to do, then we redirect the committee to say, and, and, and we're jumping to the next agenda item, but we, we see in peace. One of the reasons why. One of the reasons why I think they pushed it to a month fiscal year was because they're in the process of determining what they want to do with the museum. They are saying they want to make it period appropriate because, you know, at one time we were talking about putting artifacts in it like a regular museum. But there was a clear issue we don't have. So they made the decision that just doing a period appropriate restoration, but they haven't actually moved in the direction of doing the official work right up. Until Don said that was what they wanted to do because they did concentrate on the church. If that pulse is changing, we just tell them to actually go focus back on.
One, one thing that I would like to recommend, and we've got another community that's just miles up the street. That has recently done a national grant that committee did at my city festival. And what they've done is they purchased the mealhouse. They're moving the mealhouse to the Massa Hill Recreation Site. They're renovating them as need be, and they're going to use period pieces that go in that mealhouse as a museum. And then they're going to give it to the city festival. The reason I bring that up is they could ask the Massa Hill Historic Preservation Committee. And Tony Schabani, former mayor of the festival, is heading that up. It's all Massa Hill people that have done this. But what they're doing for that mealhouse is people that have period pieces of furniture are donating it from their families. So like, if I had something that was in Mrs. Warner's mealhouse, then what would happen would be that piece of furniture we could donate and it would have on it. This came from number seven Powell Street toll park. And so that's how they're doing their mealhouse. And I just believe that if we followed their leader, at least had a conversation with them, we might be able to sign that we could do something very similar to what they're doing. And they've, they, if you go up and look at Massa Hill, the artwork they require, that committee did all that. They raised the money and they had some grant funding, but that's, but I'm just saying, we've got somebody we could go talk to. And that would be a perfect place for them to see what they're doing with their mealhouse. There's even a little video, it was on YouTube, about what that current mealhouse looks like now and what they projected it's going to look like.
You're talking about sort of museums?
Yeah, museums.
Okay. And I, I'm addressing this to the board here when I say this and asking that my thoughts would be that we, of course, we took the committee's advisory. But I'd like to see us move forward on what we can do with this building, get it finished. Not go with the consultant, take that money, put it toward the building and go with the exterior or a separate building for a bathroom and go ahead and get this project finished.
He's gone back to Thomas Southern Bill.
Drew, on that there. Drew, in this year's budget, we budgeted eighteen thousand for chapel repairs and twenty-seven thousand six hundred for the museum. How much of that is left?
Oh, that's left. Oh, well, I think the museum, a portion of that was used, I think, to remove a tree. But most of the museum money is still there because that was going to be for some ADA changes to the building. But depending how the museum is being used is, will determine how much ADA we either need to use or not use for the building.
There's conversations on that too because in this master plan, they're talking about doing an historical trail that links all these uses. And if you take that approach, didn't build, everything for two great towns. Um, there's, there's this ideology, if you make it a destination on a trail or a tour, you may not have to actually put ADA compliant bathrooms in. So that's the conversation that happens because we have to understand too, if you don't take some different approach, the museum has to be ADA compliant as well.
If you do it as a period house.
If you do it as a period.
It doesn't have to be ADA that. It could be a period that.
I'd say that that would keep us with keeping the, the tubs in there, keeping the things that are already periods. Well. Yes, sir?
Uh, here, we got the email the other day where that committee is going to do a visitation to different areas. But in regard to the museum, uh, to get different ideas on how they do stuff and stuff they have on display. And I've tried to work with them on that quite a bit. And Chance, thank you for helping out. Thank you, man. We just need to go ahead and get the building done some way. Both of them really good stuff. Give one of the time to get it out of the way, and we won't have anything on our list to do. Except to have little workout. Go ahead and list. I didn't need to cut you off.
No, that's okay. I'm tired. I'm, I'm tired. I'm not sure.
They made it though.
Could the, the money, the twenty-seven thousand to make an ADA compliant bathroom at the mealhouse be used for that ADA compliant freestanding bathroom on the parish house site? And then that be part of the trail and then it's bathroom related?
Without, without a, a bad process, I'm not sure. I can, I can, we take this back. And that's one thing everybody needs to understand. As staff, we're studying this. We're getting two completely different sets of approaches. And we're trying to find some kind of battleground to.
If you could, if you could, if we, if, if it's possible to put a freestanding bathroom on the property that we have there where the parking lot is supposed to be. You know, somewhere so it, and it looks appropriate. And then you put, and then, then you have that on the trail. So what would happen is period house and then the period of church. And but you got a bathroom that they both can use. They're right there within walking distance. Would that work?
Plan on small, it's, it's, well then you need to make sure ADA step in. You need to make sure they're clear on what they're getting. You want stick bill where an architect comes in and designs it so it looks like that? Or do you want prefab where, you know, it's, you're looking at a catalog, but you, but you can't, you can't guarantee, you can't guarantee it's going to look like, or, 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 or complement the church. That's only two things I want you all to be careful about, how you want to go about doing that. Stick bill, you have more chance of making it, your design, your design intent. You can also get an architect to come in and for, for a structure that's small, it shouldn't be much money. But you get an architect to design it so that it, it fits the, the character.
Could we not do a design deal company that does both of those? Whereas what we're saying is, we want you to design, we want you to build it, and how much is that going to cost to do that?
I know someone who talked to me.
Would that, that work?
That'll work.
And you get all, that bathroom is all one package?
Madam Mayor, that's where I was going back with, with the monies in this year's budget. That kind of ties what James was saying. That if we're going to, you know, we've got all this money and if it's still sitting there, what are we going to do with it for the rest of this year? And we use it on something now to at least put in the freestanding bathrooms. And that would finish the project. That would finish the project this year.
Yeah, because I know the museum money was being held up until the terminate, the final determination for the museum. And y'all are saying it's a steady period, you know, for that time period museum. And Chancer can take that back to the committee and then everybody can be on the same page. So we know what to pursue for those bathrooms. The church, that was finished. It's going to be some outside.
Yeah, we put the church, the cosmetic things, the church done, done now. The things that we've got budget money for now.
The church had that eighteen thousand in there that, that was going to be used for.
What I'm saying, can we put the bathroom cost, design deal cost in the 2021 budget? So we're still asking for forty-nine thousand dollars for, for all these things.
But that's for next year.
That doesn't say for next year, but that.
What you're saying is with the money left over, can we get the bathroom done now?
Yeah.
Put the forty-nine thousand next year budget.
Now I'm reversing that. I want the church done now, so it's usable. And the bathroom to be prior to the 2021 budget. So if we approve it in July one, we can get that design deal.
But we do the church now, and then 2021 comes, the money you're putting in is.
And by the end of this year, you'd have the church and the bathroom done.
Madam Mayor, if that's a motion, can I go ahead and make that motion?
You have to figure it out what I just did.
And I know, I know, we're, we're all on the same team and we're all trying to reach the same goal. And I think there's been, and I know over the past couple of years, I'm just going to say this, there's been conflicting priorities. Melissa doesn't have to say it, I'll say it. There's been conflicting priorities from us, that's the board, and from the committee. And it's, and it's put Chancer and Don Cisco and Bruce in the middle of which way do we go? Do we go over here? Do we go over there? So I think to finish this project, I'm going to make a motion that, that we go ahead and start the process on the freestanding bathrooms. And if we need to use the money that's left over in this year's budget to pay for that, then that's what, that's the direction to go.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
That's all for that. I'm making a motion.
Yeah.
You made a motion?
Yeah.
I made a motion.
Let's finish the project.
Let's finish the project this year.
Okay, the, the.
I think y'all talked on the same thing.
Talk about the same thing. The, the, to think about this, and then clarify your motion, if you want to. Would be to finish the museum with the money we have now. If it takes, it should take all that, I don't think, but if it does. And then in the budget for 21, put the design, not going to be the, the church, finish the church. And the design deal for the bathroom being 2021. And we get it started as soon as we approve the 2021 budget. So the plan would be, the museum could be used hopefully by the end of the year.
And I think technically, if we can check with Drew with the main funds, check with Don to make sure we can go ahead and do these small cosmetic upgrades to the church. With that now, but what you're ultimately budgeting with the forty-nine thousand in July is to go ahead and get the designed bathroom. So once you approve that, the church is already finished by the time you approve that budget. That's what the sound is.
Yes, sir. So the bathrooms will come out of next year's budget, but the museum would be spending them, not the museum, the church, you spend it this year's money.
But for ADA compliance, we, we still wouldn't have any bathrooms for the chapel.
But it will, it will, until the bathrooms are finished.
And that's, that's why we, we start the process now.
And I think this year, also, when we say next year's budget, we're talking a couple of months.
Yeah.
When I talk, we're talking, we're in line. Yeah, I'm talking about now.
Now, I'm talking about finish this project now.
Okay.
Design, design bills with freestanding bathrooms. That's my motion in this year's budget.
Okay, so, now, discussion, yes, sir?
Got a second? Okay.
One thing we got to, we got to think about is what kind of bathrooms are going to be there? Are they going to be flush? Toals? Is that what, be what they had back in the day?
Are we talking about the museum bathrooms or the bathroom?
The chapel.
They're, they're standing outside the church.
And you want regular. I think, I think, one thing we have to understand too, if we're talking about these bathrooms, these bathrooms are also going to be not only just for the church. Before the historical tour that ties the church to the museum, to the mules, parish park, the footbridge approval.
And everything else that moves up to that area.
Bathroom. So I want to at least push for the higher end than the lower end because it's not going to just be used for the church. But if we're talking about in that area of parish, I'd use B, it's also a great, you got to know, it's the architecture. It's a great way to do that as a plaza that could possibly use and cooperate with the church, with weddings, and it ties in.
Can you bring us up March fifteenth, Chancer?
Yeah, definitely. I'm talking now. I think it's not fair. Now, what I also. What I also like is the two, it suggests where Drew and I talked, this is the budget retreat, but it may is the manager's budget where you approve whatever. So we can hopefully not only have whatever something you need for fifteenth, but for that budget, it's the official process. So we're working to make sure we know what that stipulation is, we know what our, by the time we're actually to approve the official budget. We now know it could be the utilization of what we have now. It could be less than forty-nine. It could be a little more than that. But we have real numbers now that are tied specifically to getting that church to open.
Madam Mayor, let me understand the motion, please.
Okay.
Um, yeah, me too. The motion is that we finish the church out of this year's budget. For eighteen or twenty-two thousand dollars there.
I don't know that he said amount. He just said the funds that are in the budget.
The funds that are in, whatever the budget.
We'll apply those funds to the project.
And, and we're going to get the chapel finished as before June thirtieth or the June thirtieth. You're not for.
We're going to start the process. We might as well be finished, but we're going to start the process.
It's also saying the freestanding bathrooms.
And begin the bathroom. Here's what I wrote. Use current funds to finish the chapel and begin bathroom project. Is that?
Is that, is that Commissioner Bill Friday, a mutual approval, what you just said?
What was it, James?
What I had written, I, use current funds to finish the chapel and begin bathroom project.
Yes.
That's one.
That's it right there. You got it.
And I said that.
With feedback, March fifteenth. You got five minutes.
I'm not the first, we got an April.
April first, because I think our agenda is already set for.
April first is not a good day.
Okay. All right, we have a motion that we finish the chapel and start the process with freestanding bathroom. And we have all this done in this budget here, and that will be beginning June thirtieth. All those papers, if I raise your right hand.
Oh, yes.
In your pose, seeing none. At this time, it's on recess to go have lunch. Back to order.
Y'all said you'll have enough people coming.
I found more than one now, but I got to have a friend here.
Okay. Let's get started back.
Okay, let's start back. We will be, I'll turn it over to, uh, Mr. Holland.
That's me, yes.
I guess we're to the.
Great, so I've got a couple of updates for you that I'll be really quick. Um, and then we'll turn it over to Beth for to see what you can call here, I think. The, um, y'all just approved it. Was it the last meeting or meeting before? Anyways, the FOB access to Town Hall and Park is in red. Um, Town Hall, all the infrastructure is in already. And, um, they're working on getting everybody their actual FOB thing. Once everybody has their FOB, then we will disconnect the keypads. They'll still be on doors, but we're going to change the keypads that have like an emergency code that police and fire will have. So everybody will be able to FOB in, and then the keypads will only be used for emergencies. So the numbers in the police department won't have different numbers. And what that does is every time an employee leaves or something, we have to rekey the keypads, have to remember their number. The FOB, you just deactivate the FOB, then we can have to turn it in. So our building will be, we'll have those probably hopefully next week sometime. Parks and Rec, they're still installing all the wiring. At Parks and Rec Park. And that should be done in next week or so, and then they'll, they're like a week behind us.
We're going to get instead of FOB.
Right. So then the other thing y'all approved was the, uh, where Jenny, Melissa, and Dan sit in council meetings. The guy's dropping off today, some samples, they're going to have to rebuild it. They can't really use a lot of the existing structure that's there. They're going to try to repurpose as much of it as possible, but if they can't, he's going to drop off the, I don't know what you call it, the countertop, the top bars. And we're going to try to back it to the existing one. Those samples, he's dropping off at Town Hall today, so I'll get him, uh, which one looks the most like it, and we'll go from there.
Yeah, question on that, man.
The third thing y'all approved. Yes.
Are you going to give them more counter space?
Yeah, he's going to add three or four feet to that so they can, they won't, they won't be stacked shoulder to shoulder back there. Yeah, it'll be a lot better. What's the third thing you did? Oh, the digital sign. Okay, the digital sign at, uh, the Lake, the corner of Lakeview and South Main. Uh, they're going to put a demo sign out there. It's not going to be in the brick building, it'll be next to it, but it's going to be a demo sign. Just so that people driving by will kind of see, here's what we're fixing to put here. Sometime between the tenth and the twelfth, they're going to put out a demo sign so we can kind of get an idea of the, the digital mockup that's going to be out there. But they have ordered the sign and they said usually take. But they have ordered the sign, and they said usually takes about eight to 10 weeks, just to get the sign in. So as soon as it comes in, it'll move a lot quicker, but we have to wait, you know, about two, two and a half months, just to wait for the sign. But it's been ordered and that process has just started. And if you haven't been to Town Hall, the sidewalk, on the other side of the building, is completed, and so people can have better access to the front door now while the construction's going on. So it looks great.
We're gonna still use the same frame as the Land Trade?
What?
The same frame?
Oh, the digital sign? That little brick building for? That building's not gonna change, they're just gonna take out the letter boards and, and have a, they make digital signs to go in. That was specific instructions. Because all three companies came out there and said, well, we can build a new thing, and I said, nope, nope, the building's same. You gotta make it fit with this building as it stands, so they had instructions for that. So that's just updates on those, uh, three or four things, if you ever have questions about those, just let me know. And now, I'll turn it over to Ben.
What page we on?
We are on page 15.
I asked that question on page, and I'm sure Brian wouldn't have that.
Okay. Ready?
We're ready.
Okay. All right, so I'm gonna start this out with not this picture, but to let you all know that I'm pretty sure I speak for all the departments in here, if there is an issue, a question, a concern about anything that is stormwater related, or you think may be stormwater related, we will go out and look at it, we will go out, take the time, talk to the resident. Um, I don't think at any point, if there's an expectation for you guys to answer questions about stormwater, but to give them our information or Tyler's information, so that we can go out and provide that service to them. Um, I'll follow that up, I stay on the mass. I do not follow any of the gossip columns on Facebook or any other social media. Um, I am a 41-year-old lady with two small children, um, and I just refuse to do that. So if there is a complaint, um, the process is for those residents to call the Town Hall. Uh, they can call, they can get to us through the town manager, they can get to us through multiple avenues on social media that is governed and run by the town staff. But I'm not gonna respond to anything that is just gossip and blame and, and really nothing, because there's nothing to it. So with that being said, we request this from DOT, in regards to Seaway Collier, their plan to fix the flooding issue. And I'm gonna start this by saying, I know Commissioner Bell Flowers has talked to me before, and the running joke is that I like to say no, because sometimes it's not ours. Um, it's not ours to deal with, and that is legally, it's not ours to deal with. And that is the situation here at Seaway Collier. Um, Rockfish Road is a DOT roadway, Summer Drive, the end where it's flooding, is also a DOT roadway, and Dever Circle is a DOT roadway. So those are all the areas that are flooded. Now, it was asked of me, you know, are we not responsible for taking care of our residents? Yes, we are. So what we do, and I'm not sure if it's our police department or public works, I'm assuming public works, um, when we do have a heavy rain event, that staff is sent out to put barricades up. And I will tell you that I have seen them with my very own eyes, they choose to go red, they drive into the ditches. Um, the best thing that we can do as far as that's concerned is educate our residents. They know that it floods, um, it's been flooding since 1980s, um, and that's kinda the, the furthest back that I could find somebody that said, you know, I moved here in the 80s, and it's been, that's been an issue since then. It's a very flat spot, um, there is no outlet. We have asked consistently for DOT to maintain the ditch, and they have been doing a better job. We did request, um, you guys saw, Melissa sent out the email that, um, we had talked to Richie Hines. And what was requested was basically, could we dig the ditch, be proper water? Um, they could, but it would cause an even bigger public safety issue. And for, for me, for the Town of Hope Mills, and also for the state, public safety's always going to take precedence over something that's an annoyance. Um, we have to put public safety as a first priority. So with that being said, um, they are actively working on getting that repaired. And when I say actively working, they have already started a project in that area. The construction let date is scheduled for October of 2023. Um, that is subject to change, we all know, things happen, plenty of sources shift, it could happen earlier, that would be the best case scenario. But they are, they've already done soil sampling in the area, they have a preliminary plan, they did not wanna give us that preliminary plan just because it's so preliminary, they don't know. Um, I'm gonna let you do that part. Um, so we actually asked them, but he's like, no. I was gonna get him to tell y'all jokes, but they're terrible, so. Um, we, um, we basically have been, we keep in contact with DOT, we work with them, you know, most things that happened, we're in contact with them. Um, anytime anything changes for this, they are gonna let us know, they know that it's on you guys' radar, they know that the town folks are upset about it. But I do wanna point out the fact that two years ago, we had somebody send in a comment, concern about the area on the town administration page. We didn't answer it, we reached out to them. But here in the last two years, I have yet to have a phone call from a resident about Seaway Collier flooding. Not one. So with that being said, if they do call us, we are going to tell them that that's a DOT issue. We're gonna give them the phone number for DOT, if there is a complaint, just like us, if DOT has to hear from them all the time, maybe it'll happen faster, I don't know. Um, but the town, the town is not responsible for the Seaway Collier flooding. DOT is, and so that's what we need to be telling the residents, if there's a project, it is gonna happen, it is in the first phases, they're doing the design right now. Um, their plan is to actually, the only place that they can pipe that water, which, um, was that this board that counted, or the last board?
What?
That first update we did. I think that might have been the last board.
The last board, too.
Anyway, about two, yeah, about two years ago, we basically, we went out. We met with, um, some grad students from NC State, they work for Dr. Billhern, he's like the stormwater god in North Carolina. Um, and we asked him, his residents, to come out and see if there was something that they could do. Um, between them, um, Crawford Design came out, that's the schools engineer, the county engineer, and then we had a private engineer, and the school superintendent person that they sent out is also a PE as well. All of these people looked at this, we mulled over it, the works has gone out, we've gone out. Um, the only option to pipe the water is to take it in front of the millstone. So you're looking at putting pipe in from Seaway Collier all the way down to the millstone, and that's where the closest outlet is. So... Yep. So with that being said, we also, not only are we not legally responsible, we don't have the money, because that's gonna be a lot of money. Um, just knowing the projects that I've done, piping water a very short distance is a million dollars a month. You have to take into account, they have to acquire all the easements along those properties. They'll have to get those executed and, um, coordinated with the county, they'll design, and then they have to hire somebody to do the construction. So it's a very lengthy and expensive process. So with that being said, I'm gonna let Tyler, he's, he's like the construction person. So DOT did send us an email with, um, basically what it's gonna take to get from one place to the next. So I'll let him kinda explain that, so you guys know. But, um, we, we, uh, I don't think that it helps that we've had lots of rain, lots and lots, like 17 inches of rain for the month of January. Um, the water table's very high right now, so we, in my world, it's understandable, but I do know that residents don't quite understand, so.
So just to give you an idea of the magnitude of this project, they're gonna, they should start at the Putt Putt Center, because you always start at your lower end and you work upwards. That's how jobs are designed. Um, the pipe, DOT gave us some pipe sizes, and this is just, um, rough figures, but just imagine 1,500 to 2,000 feet of pipe, that's at least five foot in diameter, and that's not outside diameter, that's inside for water. And you're gonna go up to roughly another thousand foot of pipe that's 36 inches and 30 inches in size. And to get, get it from Putt Putt just to Rock, um, Camden Road, this pipe is going to be 10 to 15 foot deep at the minimum. And that is going to open up, the trench for this pipe has to be fairly large, you're going under existing utilities, so it's not gonna happen overnight by no means. Um, and this, he said that these lines are not catching every look and cranny, but from all the way to, from the millstone to Camden Road, you've got 36 inch, 30 inch, and 24 inch pipe, and then once you get to around Seaway Collier, you start, um, downsizing a little bit. 18 to 15 inch pipe, e- even that pipe is still gonna be five, six foot deep, probably at the minimum. Um, like I said, this, this type of work does not happen overnight, of, of existing utilities, you have to put driveways back in place, um, when you dig through them before the end of the day. Probably no weekend work, it's, it's just very time consuming, and it's also very expensive due to the size of this pipe. Um, and I'm not really sure.
Okay, so what I'm gonna do is open up the board to any questions for, if you guys have questions about the project, or about anything that you've seen or heard about it, so that you all, we're all on the same page as to what's going on, what's gonna happen. And then, um, I do want to take you through, um, because I think that, I'm not sure that we, we discussed this ever before the board retreat, but, um, the stormwater report has a master plan, we will be updating it in next year's, um, budget year.
It's the CIP.
Yeah, it's in the CIP.
Yeah.
Um, it was completed in 2011, so quite obviously, it's been 10 years since we approached this, so the projects that are in there. A couple of them, I've never even seen water standing in that area, so, um, it's just, it's time to upgrade, upgrade and update that plan, and also, um, the cost of construction and engineering associated with it, because that has increased as well. So who has questions?
Mister, please.
I happen to be one of those people that live there maybe, and yes, it's funny, because here, in our neighborhood, a building drain is a lot better than it was. From Brooklyn. Um, and I did have a lady stop by my house yesterday complaining about the flooding, and that gave her condition of this. I explained to her that we were working with DOT to come up with a solution, but I didn't know what all the details were, or I didn't go with any specifics. My question now, whether there be other catch basins down Camden Road towards the millstone? And still just, are the ditch lines at stormer, Dever, Seaway Collier?
There's, I believe there's a certain distance that requires a box to collect water, and it also has, I believe, has something to do with the air and allow water to flow correctly. So from the outfall, which is in front of Putt Putt, down Camden and to Rockfish, there should be, um, a lot of boxes, yes. There, there should be a lot of boxes that are catching water throughout that process.
And just to be clear, when he says a box, obviously there's an underground fault, and what you will see above ground is the inlet, like it, it will be a DOT style inlet. So it won't be the kind that you see in, in the neighborhood with the roller curb, it will be one of those that's flat and...
Yes.
Will there be more water to get in film at that point?
We're, we're gonna assume at this point, um, I don't know, um, DOT has to go by not only their own standards, but the state's standards. Um, and since that will be in there right away, they can basically do, you know, it'll be, the design will be up to them. Um, hopefully they will leave those open, because right now, um, Camden Road is not a curving gutter road. So if it were curving gutter, it would require it to be open, so that it caught it in the, but Camden Road was designed, um, much like some of the older neighborhoods, where that water shoots off the side, and that's what it is designed to do. Um, they may do some ditching along there to help out with the conveyance of the water coming from the roadway, because it would be a good opportunity to do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, fresh.
Ma'am, ma'am. Beth, thank you.
You're welcome.
It was a thorough understanding going through this slide, because the last, the last rain event generated a tremendous amount of phone calls. Not to, probably not to you guys, but it did to us, along with the videos, along with the, uh, the chatter talk about a number of different things in that area. And you know, everybody, you're right, everybody that lives there knows this area's gonna flood, and it's gonna flood heavily. Regardless of how many cones are put up and barricades are put up, people still drive around it, they drive through it. This past time, we had this red truck almost flip over, regardless of how many. And it's always, what is going, what is being done about the safety of the residents of Hope Mills? And we don't own any of it, and we can't control any of it. So I'm glad to see this presentation, uh, about what the future plan from that area is. Somebody's gonna get hurt there, just a question of who and a question of when. But it's gonna be from their own fault, because they're gonna cause it by going around the barricade or the cones. So, thank you, Beth.
You're welcome, and, um, I just wanna make sure, um, Commissioner Bell, you mentioned, you know, that somebody did stop by and talk to you, and you guys know a lot of people. Um, you've talked to a lot of people, and you're gonna continue to talk to a lot of people. So the best thing we can do is send them to us, you're not expected to answer those questions, that's our job, we're there Monday through Friday, late at five. Um, and our phones are always on, if we're not there, we return calls, um, we do go, I mean, we go to a number of places, they, you know, they say they have a sinkhole, and it's really not, it's just a depression. But, you know, back a couple of years ago, when Florida was having these large ones, that's what people were seeing, and they're like, I've got one, my house is gonna fall there. Um, so we do go out and look at, at those kinda things, um, if, even if you think it's not us, we'll go out and look at it anyway. I'd rather us determine that it's not ours than for you to tell somebody something that, you know, may or may not be true. So with that being said, if there are no other questions, I'm just gonna briefly touch on, um, the, what we're doing to upgrade the stormwater master plan, so that you guys know what we have in mind, and you know what currently exists, because I don't know, we're actually gonna be putting it on the website here in the, the coming month, um, so that it's out there for everybody, but we will be upgrading it as well. So, um, if you'll turn to that second page, I went ahead and put the executive summary for our master plan in there. I'm not gonna read that to you or expect you to read that right now, but it'll probably be something good for you all to familiarize yourself with, just so that you know if somebody asks what we're doing. Um, and this is the overall goal of the stormwater master plan. So what happens, um, basically, this is, it's a huge book, there's two of them, um, and there are about $22 million worth of projects in total in that book. Now, quite obviously, we are not gonna be doing all of those anytime soon. We've completed about $6 million worth of projects since, um, Melanie left here in about 2014. Um, and we're currently working towards, um, I, Drew and I have a running joke about my stormwater. I like that fund, meaning the, the leftover money, the extra money, to be at about a million dollars, because if we were to have an epic failure somewhere, meaning a storm drain pipe opens up and we have to go out and repair it, we don't have time to acquire funding or wait until two years it has to be done then, we're looking at a significant cost, and a lot of stormwater projects, um, in the book are close to a million dollars, and it only fixes one small area, so it's just really costly work. Where we go in, I always tell the residents, the worst case scenario, this is gonna look like a war zone, because we have to tear up every... this is gonna look like a war zone, because we have to tear up everything in the yard, the driveway. Commissioner Marley had very small symbols, we tore up half of his yard just trying to repair that, and he's still got some state pay going on.
Your house is falling.
Look, we ride by and throw things in it to fill it up for you. Um, if you'll just take a peek at the next page, it's also listed, there's a, you'll see a, a list of projects. So what our master plan encompasses is everything that is town-owned, that needs to be addressed, or that someone said needed to be addressed. And I'm, I'm gonna say that just so that you all know, when we put this together, um, I was not here, but what they do is, they send out surveys, they call, they go to public events, very similarly to what Marco had done with the Parks and Rec Master Plan, they try to get as much information from as many people as they can. Then they go out and actually investigate all these areas, they look at them when they rain, they ask us to look at them, they collect pictures, and then they start working on. So what is in this book is actually their concept on it, so it's not an actual engineer design, it's what they think will work best. Sometimes they give us more than one option, if they see one, something that's a high-end project as opposed to something that could be done to temporarily provide, let's say, a five-year level of service to, to make it better. Sometimes we do the, the minimal project, and it actually fixes the problem. So we always try to, try to do something small first before we go large scale, just because of the cost. Um, when we make our decisions, we don't pick the projects based off of, um, you know, who lives there, or which subdivision it is, um, we have to be fair and equitable to everybody in town. The tax dollars, you know, have to be spent in a, in a manner that is in keeping with the town's, you know, policies. Some of them are, we can't do them all in order just because of the funding, it depends on what we have that year. Um, we have worked our fund back up a little bit, um, but if we were to do one of these large projects, we'd be back down to zero. Our operational budget is about three hundred thousand a year, and then we have about three hundred and fifty that's left over for a project. So a lot of times, you'll see us bring you a project, and we'll be designing it, and we won't actually do the construction until the following year. Um, Drew's been very helpful in making sure that the money, we have enough, so that we don't have to borrow, or ask, or move money around, so he's always helpful when it comes to these larger projects as well. But I do wanna point out to you that this was done back in two thousand eleven. The very first sheet, um, the forty-one projects, those are all town projects. So those are all projects that the town is responsible for. Um, we may find some more when we do the update next year, or we may be able to take some off, it just depends on, you know, how it goes. Since we've had such a rainy season, I venture to say, there's, we're probably gonna have a couple more projects that are on there. Um, storm drain pipe, when it's put in, if it's put in properly, it typically lasts about twenty years. So when we get a new subdivision, and I get a call like, uh, right after we've CO'd the last house, I'm doing this, because we shouldn't have had an issue, which at that point, is normally still under warranty, so that's a good thing. If you take a look at that second sheet, there's, um, a summary of flood control projects. So the stormwater program through the state, they are, they, they basically delegate authority to the local municipalities. We are delegated to operate a stormwater program, but their main goal for us is not flooding, it has nothing to do with water quality. What they want us to be doing is treating water, they want us to be clean water. So most times, when I say that, people go, wait, what? Because the stormwater programs were set up to clean the water. They want the water that leaves our community to be clean water. They don't want that water, they don't, they don't want us to pipe it to the creek. They want us to put it in a basin and let it sit there. Um, or to put it underground, or to use one of the, there's multiple different types of SEMs that can be put in to treat water. But the program was designed, designed to treat water, not to deal with flooding. So if you notice, these are all projects that are, are mostly related to treating water or fixing something that's broken in town. We have a separate si- situation over here with the flood control projects, but you'll notice those are all DOT. So the reason that that's in there, they put them there to, if we got all of ours done, and we had some extra cash, we could help DOT out. I don't see us getting there in the near future, but, um, you know, they, they are there. But I, I find it rather, uh, difficult to, to stomach the fact that they don't, Seaway Collier's not on there, it's not listed as a project in that area. There is a project, so most of them are on schoolyards, if you look in the last table, Seaway Collier was ranked number three, but those are water quality projects. And I asked Drew to put in, um, what that project was, and if you'll notice, I'm not gonna read all that to you, but go to the last page, looks like this.
Is that on there?
Yep. That is actually, um, if you all, you've all been through there, you all know. So the school, at the, at the back where the cafeteria is, is what faces Rockfish Road. So all the water that comes off of the school, not, I wouldn't say all of it, but a good majority of that water goes to the sides. So over to Sturbridge Drive and over to Sumner on the top end. And then that water either exits on the Sturbridge side, or it exits through the back of the neighborhood, which it takes a long time to get to the pond that it goes to. So what they have proposed in our stormwater master plan was basically going on the schoolyard and putting in some infiltration basins. I will stress to you again, this is not for flood control, this is only for water quality. So if it is the board's wishes that we do something, um, in that area, this is a listed project, it's not that expensive, it would require the school to allow us to do it. I'm not sure what kind of legal paperwork we would have to have in place, because we'd be doing a project on private property. Um, but that's something that we can certainly move forward with if that is your wishes. This is something that is listed and is, you know, we can make this happen if that is something that you all are interested in moving forward with. And I'll take thoughts on it. I will tell you, I, this, to me, would give the perception to the general public that it's going to help the flooding in some way, because most people don't understand the difference in quality and quantity when it comes to stormwater. So we don't wanna give the perception that doing this is going to help the situation down in Rockfish Road. It may, but that's not what it was designed to do. So with that being said, I'll take any more questions, and then if you guys wanna talk about moving forward with this, we can. It's up to you guys.
I wonder if the school would help pay for it?
So when we had the discussion, um, with the school, it was, um, one of the representatives from Cumberland County, and from Cumberland County Engineering, because, you know, the two houses that are down there, those are in the county. Um, the school and the school's engineers adamantly opposed us to do anything on their property. We, we had initially thought that maybe we could put in, put in like a basin down at the bottom where the trees are, um, right there kind of where it was flooding, but that's upstream from the flooding issue, so we would have to either pump it or dig a hole that was a huge safety issue. And I believe that that's why the school didn't wanna do that. Um, we talked about this with them very briefly, um, and I don't think they were opposed to this part, but they didn't wanna pay for it. And I will tell you, they had a plan, I don't know if you, I'm sure, may or may not remember, they had a plan to put in like a park, a walking trail out there, the baseball field, they were gonna put up a, um, like a shed for the kids with picnic tables, so they, they could eat outside. Um, they were gonna do some major improvements out there, and I think that's why they removed all the trees. But when they submitted the plan to the town, they were told that they would have to put in a stormwater treatment facility for all of these, and they made the plan because they didn't wanna have to pay for the stormwater. So I was, I had an email from their engineer that says, what can we do and not trigger the stormwater? And unfortunately, that's a lot of their development around town. They will ask, what can we do and not have to do the stormwater?
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
So, just so we're clear, that retention pond is on the side of Sumner, right? That large one, Sumner Drive?
Yes.
There's one back there, and then the other one is in front of the school itself, right there on Sturbridge.
Yes.
So neither one of these two would be anywhere close to Rockfish?
That's correct.
Or at the end of, uh, Sumner, where Mr. Ben Dady's house is, everybody knows him, and the yellow house, where the water really collects, not only in that property, but the, the property next to him. Those two properties between Sumner and was a deeper circle.
Yes, sir.
That's where the water really collects, just swamps right in there and collects, definitely, in those two, in those two areas. But the school is unwilling to match funding, or provide any funding?
We, we have not, um, this was roughly two years ago that we approached the subject with them about putting something down near Rockfish, but then we found out when the state engineering folks came that that wasn't really a rockfish anyway, so it, it kinda got dropped at that point, because, I mean, it wasn't the only, but we've not approached them with this idea.
Kinda like the mayor, I, I would think a fifty-fifty split might be the way to go, and, you know, you should match us for fifty, and if you can't do that, I don't think we should bear to entail costs, because it's on their property.
I just, I, and, and this is me speaking as the stormwater administrator and the person who discharges the funds for these, um, I don't think that this should be a priority of the board right now, I think we have other places that that money would be better spent, but it's, again, yes, sir.
Um, so what does this school do? What problems does this school do there? Because we're, we're living and spending money on private property.
Yes, sir.
And that's a million dollar thing.
Yes.
So I'm not in favor of spending, if any of the towns are living on private property.
Right.
There's certain issues, like you said, there's other projects throughout town that we could put that money through, so I'm not in favor of doing that. That would be necessary.
I, I'm in total agreement with you on that, this was something that, um, you know, it was in the book, it is addressing something at Seaway Collier, so it's given to you as an option, so you know it's there, but it's not gonna address the issue that, that is the ultimate issue, which is Rockfish Road. So I would, again, we're not recommending this professionally to you to do, just because we have, if we had done all the other projects, and we were just looking for something to do for, for fun, because we had extra money, I would totally pitch this to you, but with the current situation and funding, I would not recommend.
Actually, we have money in Sumner, too.
Okay.
That's a good recommendation, that's.
Do you have questions for spring?
I, I'd like to thank human power for the work you do for the town, and, um, some type of way, this does not have anything directly to do with you all, we have to do a little bit of job, but at the beginning, I started with getting more information out to them, and I would encourage us to have some, instead of like the right all the time, so I write needs to these school boards and these, uh, these legislators and ask them for, because we're five hands on top with a lot of this stuff, but if we push on the state level and on the county level to get some of this help that we need, maybe they'll, maybe they'll start to, to answer, maybe we'll get something done, push our efforts to get something done together, so that's, that's what it means to be right. But I think.
Thank you.
Well done.
And we're just getting consensus to move forward with those planning, and that plan will be the update and the cap improvement plan?
The, yeah, our stormwater management plan.
Okay, so without a consensus, okay? That's it, all righty.
Yeah.
Okay.
I do have one question, uh, three hundred and fifty thousand next year, Drew?
Yes. How much did the fund in two thousand eleven?
Yeah.
Wasn't it two, two fifty?
Honestly, I, Melanie threw out a number that it was over two hundred thousand, but with the amount of work, I mean, it, it takes them over a year to, to give us a product, because there's multiple engineers having to work on it. It's just like, remember, we all got, we were all like, where's the Parks and Rec plan? But there's so much information, and it should last us for at least another ten years, so we're putting in money for something that we can, we will be actively working out of for the next ten years, so.
And what we'll do closer to the budget, that will get some quotes from the same company, WA Sticks, and, uh, you know, they can give us an idea of a better number to use, so I'm hoping it'll be a little something.
That's a big number for next year's budget, and that's kinda what.
Well, it'd be out of the stormwater fund, not the general fund, yeah.
That's a big number.
We're actually, um, Drew and I talked about, um, seeing, you know, because they, WK Dixon did this plan, if it's a, how much it would cost them to just update it, as opposed to, we don't wanna start fresh, because this is still good, it's just the costs are off, and some of it, the issues have changed. So we'll get some numbers, obviously, that will come before you guys as a board, um, in next fiscal year.
Yeah, I'll be with the budget.
And I think for Monday, maybe this is one of the things, too, stormwater is listed under, um, the infrastructure needs, infrastructure needs, and so increased funding there, so it might be something we can just, yeah, also mention that we've got stormwater issues over time, and it can be detected, no, potentially. All right, next thing, guys, please, fire department radio replacement.
Okay, I'll give you an introduction with this, and I'm gonna have the police chief, uh, finish up. This has been something we've been working on, actually, now for over a year. We had, um, Senator DeBiere, uh, we met him at, I don't know, it was one of the events, and in passing, and in talking to him, he mentioned to Melissa, if there's anything our office can do to help build out, let me know. So me and Melissa were like, I wonder if that means financially? So we started putting together a, a package of information from police and fire, um, it was in January of twenty, um, or, because they have to upgrade their radios to the seven hundred megahertz bandwidth. Every radio in police and fire, what they currently have is gonna be out of use, and they have to get brand new radios. So we thought, this is a perfect thing that maybe we can propose, uh, to, um, to his office to help us with the funding of this. That and the, um, the new, um, air packs for fire as well. So you got a radio there and an air pack. So I started putting that together last February. I just had a ballot day to send it to his office in March, to see if it was something that they would accept. If they did, then we would bring it to you, the council, and say, you know, hey, they wanna do this, you know, uh, are y'all okay with this? Then the pandemic happened, and the state appropriated every fund they had to other things. So we never even sent it in, because it's like, this would not be a priority right now, I don't want it to get lost in, um, in the shuffle. So we said, not knowing how long the pandemic would last, we said, you know, we'll send it in this fall, um, right before the election, does it be a good thing, he's running again? You know, hey, I hope those have their radios and air packs, public safety then. Of course, the pandemic lingered, 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 we're still dealing with it. So at the groundbreak, uh, Senator DeBiere was there, and I told him, I said, I've got this stuff ready for you. Is this still something we can send in, or are you still, like, with the pandemic? And he said, if you can go ahead and get it together, send it in. So, um, so I had, uh, both chiefs, fire, and police update the quotes. So that's what you have in front of you today, that's kind of the background, that's the history of where we're at. He said, send it in, then when the mayor talked to them the other week, and they set up the thing for Monday, this is something that we were gonna send in, uh, to them already in process. We never even got to the point to present it to y'all yet, um, because of the pandemic. So this is the first time I know y'all probably heard of it. But I've got the quote for police attached, and for them to have the fifty-two radios and everything that goes with it, just throw it out by cost, six hundred twelve, over six hundred twelve thousand dollars. For fire, their radios aren't as involved as what police has to have. For fire, their radios aren't as involved as what police has to have and they've already purchased some of them. So they only need another like thirteen thousand five hundred for their radios, but then the air pack quote is about three hundred thirteen thousand dollars. So we're talking roughly a million dollars here of just radios and air packs that if this isn't funded this way, we will have to find a way to get this in the budget because there's no way we can't have these radios. The current radios are just going to be cut off. Marley, you probably know all about this. Um, and then the longer we wait, the harder it is to get these radios because air free public safety organization is going to be happy to use same radios. So it's something we need to act on, um, we'd like to act on quick. Chief also has in here where they could, if we don't get it funded outright, purchase them. He's got an investment plan that we could do to kind of spread out that six hundred twelve thousand dollars. But I'll literally talk to you about, um, the, the why and more about the need and, um, yeah, the timeframe and we'll, we'll see what y'all think.
Sure. Uh, Drew, Drew pretty much hit on.
Did I steal your time?
No, absolutely not, sir. Uh, he, he hit on all the important stuff. The, the biggest thing, we got our current radios. Uh, we switched from the UHF series to the Viber network run by the state in two thousand and seven. We've, we've gotten almost fifteen years worth of use out of these same radios. And in between there, we've spliced in, uh, one or two as we've increased in staffing or other items have broken. Uh, the, the long and short of it is that they are absolutely at the end of their useful lifespan. So we've got to replace them. I think we, I think it's twenty-four months and they just turn on. Kind of like a cell phone that won't work anymore. So they'll get really nice paperweights, but they won't be able to use. Now, the thing about this particular, um, quote from Motorola, uh, which is the same vendor that we went with, um, in two thousand and seven, they will take all of our old junk and give us a four hundred dollar rebate. So, um, that will help a little bit to get that.
Oh, no, excuse me.
Four hundred dollars?
We get four hundred dollars rebate on the.
That's per order, you know, that's what. I should elaborate, yeah, that's per.
I thought you said for, for everyone.
Have they taken our radios?
Yes. They give us four hundred bucks for them.
But my question was, I'm sorry, my question was how about the old radio cord will do with?
Yeah, they, they, it's better to let them take them because they're not going to give any. Yes, sir.
And I can speak to this too and what we're saying, the Motorola windows, another part you got, Motorola is not making the replacement.
Right.
Most of these radios that we have, so when they break.
Can't get it repaired.
Exactly.
So if you're.
That's why these current ones, we use old ones to.
Yeah, we, we cannibalize some down to the frame. I mean, it's, it works though, it works, but there's just not much more that we can do with them. And then the fact that they won't even hit the repeaters or the towers after a certain date. Um, that's about as much life as what you build the streets out of.
Well, that tells me they're going to charge, going to charge us four hundred dollars to start with. It's going to give us four hundred dollars for our radio.
And that would cut roughly about twenty thousand dollars off this project.
Isn't it funny how you stated that, that you jump radios on the set back? I remember when you were chicken for death together.
Well, the acquisition cost, and this, this is why one day, if I'm ever around for it, I'd love for us to get out of the buying electronics and just lease them or something like that. These individual radios, the handsets, were a little over twenty-five hundred dollars apiece. The car radios were around forty-five and some change. You would never ever get that kind of money back again. And so, and it only goes up every year that you put off getting it. Um, so one day, if I can ever find the right plan, where you've been looking, uh, maybe I'll be able to bring you something that will be a little bit more, um, financially reliable for the town where when you get to the end of its useful life, you're not stuck with a lot of junk.
Isn't it weird how some people look at it as a necessity until they need it coming? Say, I can't get nobody out here because you didn't have a radio to just match. I think it's a good idea that we move forward with this. And I think that's for, 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 you know, that's a very good idea.
I want to go quick on the air packs. I thought, I thought the town knew. I thought before we had included air packs and something else.
We are trying to get that included as some of the equipment for the public safety building and some of the new equipment for the new station. But if we can get it funded for a year, then we can use that for something else. Because we thought, this is exactly something that they're looking for to help us fund. So if they fund this not yet, plus, when we put that in the public safety building budget, I think we, back then, we only pushed about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
So if we, if we, if we, if we do this.
That helps us, meaning in the bill, or it'll be money that hopefully spend or continue to, yeah. There'll be some savings there. So, and it could be that they said, we'll just do the radios and not air pack. Okay, we can live with that.
I was just wanting to ask because I, I remember seeing somewhere that we had air pack funded and something.
But we wanted to get it and not do it?
Yeah.
But we figured since the state's mandate, the, the state should help us pay for it.
Chief, the six hundred and twelve, is that with or without the rebate?
Uh, that's with the rebate, yes.
That's with the rebate?
Yes.
Okay, and as far as, and air packs, they were in last year's budget, we couldn't, we couldn't.
So now the budget, we've voted the project.
Yeah, and then moved them to the, to the project.
Yeah.
So that's the kind of history on the air packs. I mean, they've been floating for a couple of years now, longer than that. But I agree with Commissioner Legg, I mean, we, we, there's no question we have to move forward with radios. In fact, we have to move forward with both of them.
Right.
It's just a question of whether, how do we pay for them?
And so consensus will then move forward, everyone?
And what we're asking for is that this be submitted.
On Monday, on Monday, on Monday.
To, to Senator Devere, whoever from the state wants to help us fund it.
You'll come back to us if you have to.
If they don't fund it, we'll have to figure out how to do it.
Yeah, right.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Before Drew, before we move out of this section, I'm just, we're looking over the CIP for, for next year. We're still going to do the hundred and forty-four thousand for the car replacements?
For police?
Yeah.
We're planning to, yes. That's, that's a rotating, um, car replacement that's for police and for fire. Because I think with next year's budget, I don't think we have the ladder truck in next year's budget, but we have to order it. So it doesn't need here now, so it'll be in next year's budget. If you look at the, uh, police or the fire replacement, I believe it shows the next year eight hundred thousand dollars for that, so.
Okay, so the one forty-four is still good for the police car replacement and then fire department, they're replacing two SUVs at fifty thousand?
We're going to try to work that into the budget. That's the chief and deputy chiefs vehicles. They are, if you look at the mileage.
Yeah, I did.
High mile, there you go. Now, Steve's deputy chiefs, we just replaced that engine. So it may have a little more life, so if we only have to replace one, then we would probably replace the chiefs and hold on to the deputies a little while longer because we just replaced that engine recently, a couple of years ago, I think.
Even with this, you're looking at a couple of hundred thousand dollars plus the radios plus the air pack.
Well, we were going to submit the vehicles to.
Yeah, vehicles to set up, that's where, that's where you're not bothering them.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, Steve, good night. Okay, with this.
And then, before we move to the next one, Chief wanted to bring up, uh, another thing he's working on.
Just, it, it's going to be on your next agenda. Uh, just came to light yesterday as far as a bill wise. Um, if, if you remember back in November, Spring Lake had the, I don't know if you read it or not, had the virus issue that infected their entire computer network, shut them down. Uh, they brought in a, a team of specialists just to get them back out the door. Um, going further back in two thousand and ten, when we consolidated dispatch and records with Common County. Um, we all, you know, we moved our dispatching services and also moved our records management to their service. Uh, since we have upgraded also to the in-car computers over your retro reports, police reports, your CAD system dispatching, all that's on that. When Spring Lake got infected, the county, as they should have, to mitigate any damage, cut every surrounding agency off from access to their network. You see, right? It's a, it's a safety measure, you know you've got an infection, you want to keep it from spreading. Um, so they've been very good partners in working with us, uh, as far as getting us over the hump to get us back to access. We're not at a hundred percent yet, but, um, they have been providing technical services, computer services. Um, they've helped us with software enhancements or updates and, um, they've done a lot of stuff for us for about five months. Um, moving forward, we're working on, um, improvements that would make our system, that actually reaches out and touches their system, secure to where it's not going to be an issue. Um, but what has happened, and that's just this week, is that they've informed us that they can no longer be providing these services for free. I understand that we're using their people who are supposed to be working on their equipment to work on ours. Uh, we're using their workspace, we're using their computer system. So to get us from here to the end of the budget year, to where we can actually put in to cover this expense, um, we're going to have to pay a subsidy, uh, not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars. Now, we have the money in our budget already, existing funds. We just need to move it to cover the invoice management fee. And that's something that takes your guys' approval. Um, if we're unable to cover these costs, um, they will discontinue service probably before the end of this month. When I say discontinue service, that means we will no longer have a computer assisted dispatch. We'll no longer be able to do your electronic reports, your electronic submissions. Um, existing reports that are already in the records management system, we will no longer be able to access because that switch will be off. So, sorry for that bit of bad news. It, it's, um, like I say, we have the funds, we have the existing funds, we just need a little bit to cover. Yes, sir.
Mayor. I mean, if you've got money in your budget, do it, but why can't, why can't you just go and do it?
That's a question. The money's not in the budget for that. And we can only approve.
Maybe you can move the money.
Can only approve up to ten thousand dollars. This is.
Is this like something that's an emergency, that you need to take care of in the last?
Yes, sir.
I mean, what?
The sooner, the sooner we can take care of it, it would be better.
Can we, can we, can we just do the budget now? Can we afford to do the budget now?
Okay, with you.
Can we just get it? Something that would hold up.
Right, he's got some unspent salaries in one of his captain's positions. We're going to move it from salaries to capital out.
Go ahead and make the motion, wants to do it, Karen.
I'll make that motion.
I'll say it.
I have a motion second minute discussion. All is in favor, signify, press and write in, approved.
And just as an addendum, when the big crash happened, Hope Mills was nowhere in that, we were just going to fall out sometimes. We'll, we'll be better on the other side.
Okay, well, thank you. All right, next we move to, um, Parks and Rec.
I opted, um, I had a PowerPoint presentation with, uh.
Right, that's a good place for that. Um, this is the finale, Parks and Rec.
This is what I told, all, all the money's gone already.
Nobody laughing.
They're begging now. All right. You're begging, somebody, just now you're begging.
You should have got your.
Report on the transportation.
Oh, yeah, I can hear all jaws person. Now, sure. All right, um, so I'm not a transportation expert, but, um, the last sixty days, I felt like I had been cramming for exams. I found out in, in school again. Um, I've talked to several people. All right, um, so, um, one of, one of the, uh, one of the tasks that was given to Parks and Recreation was to look into transportation, realizing that it's a growing need for seniors, for, uh, veterans and disabled people. And I know a lot of people wonder, well, how does Parks and Recreation fit in? And to add that, we, we do service, um, a lot of seniors, kind of like the Bay Two Singers. Um, more and more, we're becoming a hub or place for, um, people with special needs and also the disabled. So, uh, we were asked to look into transportation and, um, our facility does fit in the overall picture of possibly doing this. So, um, during the course of the last two months, I've been in contact with, uh, Tom's Spring Lake, since they already have a transit system. I've been in contact with FAMPO, uh, City of Fayetteville, VAS, uh, Greenville as far as looking into grants and things of that nature. Um, and I've also talked to a couple of, um, uh, transportation consultants. And so, um, based on my research, um, there's a couple of points I want to bring to, to the board and then, um, maybe get some kind of direction or, or, um, you all give us some kind of direction on where you all want us to go next with the information. Um, as far as funding sources, one of the things I did want to mention first and it's in the report there. Um, there is something in place now, but, um, it doesn't address all the needs. And what I found is Common County, um, community transportation does have a system where they do provide transportation, but you have to, one, um, be qualified for it. And then once you're in acceptance, then you can get door-to-door transportation, but then that's limited to just a few things. That's limited to, um, if it's for medical, then, um, then you have to be eligible for that. And they do provide a door-to-door, um, service to, to take you to your adoption point. And so that service is free. Um, I did find out from, I mean, if you fair con with Common County Transportation, Hope Mills actually uses that system more than anybody else. So it is heavily used, but here again, it's not, everybody's not going to be eligible for it. But for the medical appointments, um, aside from dental, that service is for free. Um, there is transportation available for what they call urban residents and rural residents under, under, um, Common County, um, transportation program. But here again, you've got to be eligible and you've got to qualify for it. But then, even in that case, it will only take you to school and to, um, to your job per se. But that service is two dollars fifty cent one way. Um, so, um, just wanted to throw that out there. There is something available, but, um, it's not going to take you to shopping and to other, um, destinations you might want to go to, so.
Red, man. How are we going to distinguish medical, uh, clients and residential residents?
Well, there, there's.
They're going to no fee and two fifty.
There's, there's a process that you've got to actually apply for. Um, if you go to the, um, go to the web page, I hit it on the second page there. Um, there's a whole process where you go qualify for, for one of, one or three of the categories of all of them. And, um, and if you qualify, you're eligible, then at that point, it's just a, a matter of calling that number between nine and twelve AM. Just gives you a pickup that same day. Um, they will not, they, they will not do future pickups. You have to make your appointment to be picked up, um, you know, the day of. So I think it's a whole bidding process in Common County where you, you, you apply for that service and then they'll, they'll make that determination. So, I think it's a whole bidding process in Covent County where you, you apply for that service, and then they'll, they'll make that determination. There are, there are grants available for transportation, but here's what I found, that, you know, having someone that's experienced in writing grants. The first thing I found out is, it's best to have something in place and then apply for a grant to reimburse yourself as opposed to applying for a grant to go start. I've heard that from a few people. And then, the second piece of that is, if your grant writer's not going to do your reporting and your David Dispatch law, then, you know, you would have to look at having somebody on board, at least part-time, to do just that. You know, track the ridership. If you're getting grant funds, all that's going to have to be tied directly to each rider and getting those funds. And so, that's what I'll say about that. So, there's, there's a 5310 Federal Transportation Administration grant, which is solely geared towards people with disabilities and the elderly. And, and then there's the, the FTA 5311 for rural municipalities less than $50,000. I will say that Spring Lake used to get that until 10 years ago, when they were considered a rural community until the annexed Port Brack. And then that put them into the urban, the urban kind of, so. I'm told that Hope Mills does still fall under the rules, because, you know, we have, not only Hope Mills, but we got other areas that are connected to us that we will serve, the Parkinson's and other places of that nature. So, I'm told we are eligible for either or both of those grants, as long as we're considered a rural community, and we are considered a rural community. So.
Is that based on population that you said?
It is. It is based on population. So, the other thing I did, so knowing that Spring Lake, when I found out Spring Lake, because as my understanding, Spring Lake was funding their transit through the, the, through the grants. I did talk to their administrator. Patricia, Patricia. Talked to her, so she's, she's been, she's been working with their transit 17 years. And for, so for the last 10 years, she's budgeted in their annual $101,000 for, for their transit system. And just to give you an idea of what that looks like, they're not using the large buses, but they're using what we call the cutaway vans, which seats 12 people and they are ADA accessible. And essentially what they have is, they have what they call a circular bus that goes through all, a couple of the main streets and commercial districts in Spring Lake. But then, in addition to that, they have a connector that will take you down Rook's Road to the University Estates Bus Stop. And that's where you can make your transfer to go anywhere else in Fayetteville. And so, basically what I did for, for, for my research and my study, if you will, is I wanted to use Spring Lake as a benchmark because they are our neighbors, they've done it successfully for 10 years. And, and they do have something in place now. I, I do want to stress it, it's not, it's not going to give us revenue, but it's a service, it will be a service. If we get it, it'd be a service to our citizens. And they do charge a dollar, a dollar for a ride, and even though it's not revenue, it is a form of cost recovery, so a dollar each way. So, what I did was, considering, I mean, you know, those two grants are available, but in the event, we wanted to get something in place for at least a trial run. I did want to put a number, that same number, but I'm told by, by my transportation consultant, that number's a little low for Hope Mills because of our, our area. And that's probably the number more towards $120,000. $120,000, and at that rate, it will be, same rate as Spring Lake, you're looking at $48 an hour. It will, and basically looking at two to four workaway buses that would maybe focus on Gulfview for your, for a couple of pickups and stops. It will have a, a main, your main pickup's going to be at the Parks and Recreation Facility and the Walmart on Main Street. So, you will have a circular on Camden, Main Street, Gulfview, there was one of them. But similar to Spring Lake, there will be a connector to a Fayetteville bus on Southern Avenue that will take you to the Veterans Hospital or the Social Services, or to some of the other areas. And so, basically, use Spring Lake as a benchmark. And look at systems, so basically what you have from Monday through Friday, buses would run every hour on the hour from 6:30 a.m. to 10:00 a.m., lunch break, 12:00 p.m. to 1:00 p.m., and then again from 4:00 to 7:00, 4:00 p.m. to 7:00. If there was a recommendation, it would be, if we could fund or look at a trial run to see how this would work, and look to get the data on, on the ridership. That would be, that would be my recommendation. And it would definitely have something in place while we do apply for the federal grants and have something in place. Or say that we've actually looked at it in more detail.
How much is that partial funding?
Well, according to the, the transportation consultant, it's something we'll have to work out, and how long we would do it. We're already in, into this year, so depending on how long we want to run the, run the, run the, if we want to do it for four years, it'd probably be at that $120.
$120, as a partial.
If we want to go partial, and when I was talking, I don't, I don't have that number, I said, well, what if we, what if the board said that they want to do something sooner, but maybe take us to the, the fiscal year? What would that look like? I would have to get a number, it wouldn't be the $120, but it would be something, what I'm told, it would be something where they're asking for assistance. You know, it, it won't be free, but it'll be something that they're not losing their backbone, just to see how it would work, see what the ridership would look like, marketing's up.
There is not a week go by that somebody doesn't ask me when we're going to have bus service.
I've heard that.
My question here was, you talked about a transfer on Southern Avenue?
Yes.
Good. If the speed going to cover that transfer, you have to pay again to go to Veterans Hospital or something.
Well, it's been years since I worked with a bus, but years ago, when I was little, I worked with a bus, you generally didn't have to pay for the transfer. But see, of course, we're, we're not Fayetteville, so that would have to, those details have to be worked out. And there's still going to be more conversation with, with FAS. I've, I've been in contact with them, it would still have to be more conversation with FAS on how we can make that, how would you make that happen?
For most urban cities, you get the transfer one way. So, if I'm getting on a bus, but I'm going to ultimately end up getting on a train, I get the transfer, but I would need another transfer to come back.
Right.
But I think what you're explaining, because this is a, it makes it fast, you have to work that out.
I'm thinking, I'm thinking there's no cost, Spring Lake's going to do a transfer for, yeah.
Can I just give a little break back?
Yes. And that's the other piece, I mean, what I have, you know, what I have in front of you now is, is just the beginning of the special, but I, it's my understanding, I, I wanted to have some conversations with Randy Hume, but they're going through budgets like we are, so I haven't been able to get him. But I'm told that once their, once their, their, their budget season's over, he and I can sit down and talk about that more. So, I would like to come back if you all have more information in the near future, as we look at this, and based on the direction you all are giving me to go in now.
This, just suggestions we threw would be that this might be something too, from the delegation through those COVID funds that they're providing, because we have determined during this pandemic time, that people that need to get places were having a really tough time. So, I believe there might be a way, because that was another one of the things that was listed, was the transportation, that many people don't have vehicles and areas like Hope Mills, we don't have an alternative, and there's not something else you can do. So, that might be, this might be something that might be get funded, even if it were there just funding for the trial basis to see if we were.
Yeah, that's what, that's what my thought was, is the partial funding for the trial.
Any more questions? Yes.
I like that. When you were telling us Spring Lake, and under Spring Lake, there's a big vehicle senior citizen complex? Are they, are they partnering with the transportation with the senior center also?
That's where, see, we don't have a senior city, a senior center, but we do have, you know, seniors use our parks and recreations. That's why we agreed to have our, our race center as a base, but that's what they, that's where, that's where the bus stops. That's where they pick the seniors up, at the senior center.
When you talk about where they transfer, that's going to be very difficult for a lot of seniors, when they're having transfers inside the avenue or to another.
City bus.
System, yeah. That's where the development is at fault.
Right, well, I mean.
I'm just speaking for senior citizens.
If you could get them as far as the FAS system downtown, the actual transfer place.
Transfer place.
It was that you could carry them as far as there, and then they have options, plus they have availability of how they got on and off the bus, and then also have a second place if they had to wait. Because the FAS system downtown is set up for, you know, there's a wait between buses or whatever.
Now, the only thing I would say that, and I, I think the, the transportation consultant I talked to, it really would cut down on the time. And that might decrease, you know, your, your time.
Right.
You know, somewhat, but as long as that's understood, that, you know, having to go to the, the multi-motor station downtown Fayetteville, then we can definitely, if, if, if a little bit longer, ride time is going to be acceptable.
Yeah.
Speak for, I'm going to speak for the board of the 42, although this is something that I, I think is really needed in our community. I would be okay with trial running, to kind of figure out what works, what doesn't work. See what's quicks we need to make, but I definitely think it's something that, that is needed along with the other suggestions, like the other number 78.
Do you have a comment?
We're making history. We never, never had it, then I guess, and now we're going to, because making, making history.
That consensus is we have to pursue and see where we can go.
So, um, and you know, and see if the delegation can approach this, the partial funding. I think it's a win-win if we, if we go that way. Some concerns I have, but I think the trial run may, may be the best bet to flush out the concern.
Trial run, and I said, we could get some additional funding made through the delegation. I mean, they can, if they say go, then we still would want to do a trial run, but if we get some additional help, we might not take the moon directly from something else you might want to do.
Okay.
I said that, next?
All right, first up, which one of these do I have next slide, which one is what?
Uh, the one.
To side.
Nature.
Okay. Side of stuff, so as you all know, we've been talking about Splash Man. And so, the consultant along with the, one of our vendors, preferred vendor, I asked him to look into two concepts at least. And because Municipal Park essentially is a athletic baseball park, if you will, as we say about our name, the baseball, it's what I've heard from Commissioner Lee, baseball's king here. So, I asked him to give me a baseball theme for Sprague Ground. And so, and I asked him, there was a couple of components that was very, very important to us. Definitely want to go with quarter place, rubberized surface, because I haven't built such a playground before, and you're really problem with the quarter place. So, I asked him to give me the texture and color of concrete. And I told them that the kids really do like the spray jets and what we call the dumper. So, those two components were very, very important. Also, seating areas for, for the parents. And so, with that, they came back with two, two concepts, and like with any concept, I am going to give you the Buick version, which is always one end budget, but I, I didn't want to speak to you all, so I'm going to give you the Catalent version also, which is the second concept. And, and you all can tell me which one you all want to go with.
Yeah, let's go.
So, concept one is a 45-foot di- diameter baseball. They have a couple of baseball, and your, your handouts probably can display it better than the slide does. But you have a baseball theme, surface there, it's colored concrete. But then with that, you have several baseball dumping buckets. And you have a few baseballs that actually have a spray jet, spray jet, the kids love it. This particular design will, will house at least 45 children, could hold more, but at least 45. And that doesn't include the seating area that will be surrounded, the picnic table that will be surrounded here. So, you're probably looking at it more on, on the lines around 80, 85, people totally include parents, people in the seating area.
Also, the, the NBA.
Absolutely, so this whole thing, and that, that's part of the, the overall design. Just a couple of ice images to show you, a couple of views. And then a couple of close ice mixture of the actual jets, so several options for us, the jets and, and the sprinklers.
Will we have adult time for it, people?
What's that?
Adult time at the Splash Man.
That's kind of, that's kind of scary, yeah, damn. To save water, there will be a sensor, so if there's never anybody on, on this, which I doubt it, once we get it, it's probably going to be used a, a lot. But there will be sensors that you wave your hand in front of, turn the water on, that way it saves water, preserves water, etc. This particular design does require 66 gallons per minute. So, one of the things we'll have to do is, one, check it to me to see what's available, gallons are, I think we're okay, but we're going to double check that. And then, the other part to that is, we are going to have to do a small contract with a structural engineer just to make sure that we're going to put the pump house, and we're going to use existing picnic, the existing shelter where Big T's have silicone sessions. That, that building, that storage area, we're going to put all the filtration and the, and the, the pump house. But we just need to make sure, we don't have architectural drawings in that building, so we just need to make sure that we do it the right way. So, a structural engineer will have to give us support and tell us what we have to do, be it come through the slab beneath the floor or go through the side of, of the wall.
Welcome, welcome, excuse me.
Yes, sir.
Will that filtration system, will it have a recyclable, or recyclable water?
It will, but for this particular, for this particular design, we're told that, so it'll be, it'll be a whole, we'll have a tank, which is going to be below, be below the actual slab you see there, or adjacent to it. So, it will, it will be recycled and treated water, chlor- chlorid water.
So, I know you said something about 66 gallons a minute?
Yes.
That's a lot of water, thanks for recycling it.
Yeah. It'll be recycled, which is your escalator. This is, this is actually in the form of a flower, if you will. This is actually my favorite, but, but it's more, the most expensive. But the area of this one, this particular design is 48 by 75, so it definitely will hold more children, at least 70, 72 kids. That doesn't include the parents and the seating area, so you're probably going to roughly around 100 people, if you look at seat walls and seating area for this. Does probably more, this one requires 76 gallons per minute. It does have more features, but it has a larger dungeon, which, if you ever been to a Sprague Ground, that's always the favorite element on the Sprague Ground. Kids will stand there and wait for that, those couple of minutes to wait for the warm dump on them, yeah. But here again, in the shape of baseball, and it's, it's a baseball theme there.
I think this, the flower section, especially for making it universal, I think that's a, that's where special needs, the handicaps, whoever, that's kind of gives them a separate location, it may be rather be in the midst of 45 kids in there in the middle, so I like the flower one.
And.
I think it's neat.
Separate areas, like I've always, I, I, I watch special needs and wheelchair, they like being in the midst of the rest of the kids running too, so.
That's what I'm saying, it has an open area, that where the other ones just that one big stuff, I think that's kind of neat and then. I think that's kind of neat and then approach.
So, here's the cost. So, um, um, the splash pad, the splash pad components, um, alone for concept one is right at your, um, two-hundred-seventy-thousand-dollar mark. But when you start adding the, the, the site, the site work, including the sidewalks, the pump house, seating and fencing, we are right at the, um, three-hundred-thousand-dollar budget number I gave you initially. Um, naturally, the concept two is larger. Um, so, um, with, with that particular, um, design, you're at, you're at three-twenty with just the spread ground, concrete and, and the components. And with the side work and the pump house modification, um, that's, it's gonna cost three-hundred-seventy-thousand dollars is the proper cost of the stadium to that. Um, there's a couple of ways, I mean, and, and so what, what I do need from the board, um, hopefully we give it today, is one, which concept do you like the best? Because what, what, what the engineers wanna do is actually take that concept and then, um, complete their site, their, their site plan that they will give the chancellor and his review, his group, uh, with, um, design review to take a look at and give us comments on it.
How much money was in, was in this year's budget for this?
Just the design piece.
Just forty thousand for the design.
Okay.
I do have a question though, uh, Mayor.
Yes.
Uh, well Marco, are we still trying to do the all-inclusive playground in department as well?
We are, they gave me a concept for that, not just including this presentation, but we are, and we're looking at, um, a baseball theme for that one too. So they did do it, they did do me a concept design for inclusive playgrounds. It will actually be expanded in the future along with the spread ground.
Are they gonna both be co-located?
They, they, they're gonna be adjacent, next to each other, they're gonna fit separately.
Okay. And I, I noticed that's twenty thousand in the CIP. So that's the reason I'm asking that. And so we were to look at the playground and, um, the escalator. So we're looking at about four-hundred thousand.
Yes.
Could we possibly put one of these at the golf course beneath the boat?
I mean, good, that's your, that's your, I mean, I think the.
Where do you put that?
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know, but that has a splash pad.
It did.
Okay.
It did.
Yeah, but the forty thousand that we put this year is for the main park.
Right.
Commissioner Lake, forty thousand we put this year is for the main park. See, I was looking at, if we're gonna do this and put them both together, it's one project. The inclusive playground and the splash pad. Go put them in.
Put them in together. They were designed together and, and, and what you'll find even with the site plan, Chancellor, um, you're gonna find the spread ground, the sidewalks, the park improvements, and probably eighty, eighty, um, a foot, a footprint for the playground so that all gets approved at the same time.
Yeah, one site plan to do it.
That would make it easy.
That, that's the way to go. If we're, if we're gonna do it.
I would just like to say, I, I like concept two as well. I think it's the same thing as you all are saying with like the parks and recreations, you build yourself and sometimes as soon as you build it, you outgrew it. So I think that eventually, I think that it is gonna be well utilized and used. I think we need to go with the, the, the second option. Oh, I don't know, Jerry, I think that's gonna be the.
Yes, sir. Elrada.
Yes.
Alexis.
Never seen you move that fast before.
Hey, Jane, just unplugged from the cord. That, that.
Down.
Where they?
That worked good.
Right here, Jane.
I have a question, I, we, we mentioned the, the playground as well, the inclusive playground, but this board has been talking about that for, that playground for eight years. Is there something that you can do?
Well, um.
Maybe you weren't hearing, Mike Seals brought it to the board when I first started with that to the board, that was about eight years ago.
It, it is my fault, it is my fault. So the reason why I wanted to concentrate on getting at least the design done, in the event we do pass a bond, all of the property will be shovel rated, we'll have construction documents done. And if a bond does pass, um, I envision, cause I mean, an inclusive playground is probably gonna cost you about four-hundred, five-hundred thousand dollars, you know, like forty, forty plays, um, all the measures as far as making it, um, inclusive. Um, I envision having the, the construction document and design completed. And if a bond passes, that's one project that'd be fairly easy, something we can get done within that first year of the bond, of a bond is, is passed. So that, that's been my fault of putting design with forty thousand dollars here, there to get the design refined and get cost estimates so we can add it to the bond.
There was some money raised that we did for, come count, foundation grant that we raised money, that it went into a fund. So that money could be applied for that forty thousand design plan. It's not the actual amount that money that was in there, but we did, there should be a.
I heard a number, twenty-eight thousand dollars.
Yes.
Okay.
As I was gonna say, and then we could show that that, that money that was raised years ago could now be applied to the design. Oh, my goodness.
I heard that Phoenix was double loaded about a year ago.
I think the Seals family who initiated that discussion, I think this would be a good way to reassure them that we all live in a nation. And I don't, and I don't believe that, um, a fund for a design would not be a good idea. Cause then we could start, we could have to complete it or some way to pay it. And that, I believe that we could, we don't speak that too.
Oh, Mayor.
Yeah.
Nick, what is the community foundation grant?
Yes, we did a matching grant. What we did is we, we partnered with Arms House, Southview High School, and with, uh, the Seals family. What we did is, um, we raised funds, they did matching grant. I got, I have, I can bring it, but I have the information for this grant here of, of that same type of grant. Uh, it means it needs to be initiated by. Jeez, it would have to be, it's better initiated by a committee than it would be by, uh, town staff. Because they, they, but the, the town's good too. I've got the information, there's a training set, it's, it's approaching time now to proceed with it. But I know that, um, that same group, that massive group preservation, historic preservation group, they just completed one and raised money through it, of huge support, and then they, they matched what.
Well, talk about, uh, don't have any donor board?
Oh, and so one of the things I've seen in a number of, um, communities, Blue Greenville and even Hope County, um, as far as raising funds, um, there's people that will, will raise funds. I think they got their, in Hope County, this playground, this playground raised funds. Their fencing was paid through donation, and then, um, there was a, um, I won't call it a wall, but you probably have donor signs. And, and, and it has your name and it has the level. There's different, there's three levels you can donate, and the small ones, maybe it's three hundred bucks. Then your name will go in this category, but then there's like a, there's like a, I think it was bronze, silver, gold, or platinum even.
Yeah.
Platinum's big money and your name.
And being a bigger ladder.
But they had a series of panels where the name of your company or, or in memory of, et cetera. And that's definitely something we can do and put it, imagine having a seat wall or seating area, and then that wall will be the backdrop. So that's definitely a, a, an option that we can, um, as my staff move forward with, um, our donor count, all the work on that, you know, um, possible. That's definitely something we can kick off as we go through design and, and, and have a, um, period we can have, um, take donations toward, um, the spread ground.
And just to follow up on that, from that time we did that, that, um, grant, that raising matching funds thing, it was brought to our attention then that for the all-inclusive playground that we contacted, the elementary schools especially, um, because like Rockfish Elementary School right across the street, it doesn't have adaptive things for the playground. But if you let families know that there is an all-inclusive playground that possibly the county would, um, or Cumberland County Schools might even entertain. Because that, again, is something that we don't really have across the county for, um, an all-inclusive playground. And it may have improved since we did that fundraiser, but, um, probably not so much in Cove Mills, cause I don't know of a place, yes, ma'am?
Madam Mayor, do you, uh, and I'm not sure, do you know if what our children were discussing, do you know if it's something that, uh, the partnership for children, do you?
The partnership for children, if you notice the equipment that's down at the lake, that was actually a partnership of children provide that for Cove Mills. And that's been a long time ago. I don't know how many years. Um, but that's, they're, they're coming to our tier one meeting Monday. And so as we're looking at things for children, uh, that would be something you can ask, maybe, what would they partner with us? And again, that's, that's the unknown right now, but we can, that's surely something you could ask.
And this being water, I know, I know we're different from Greenville Utilities, but, um, Greenie Utilities did donate twenty thousand toward our spread ground in Greenville. I don't know if P W C ever give us a donation, or if they will, but we can definitely ask, since it's water and, and.
Well Marco, when could construction begin?
If, 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 at the rate we're going now, I do anticipate having a final package, um, late summer, probably right at the time when we're, um, getting our budget. If it's approved, if, if we get approved funding by the budget time, I mean, we could, we could possibly have a, a spread ground by the end of the year.
Cause I know during summertime, kids are gonna be anxious to see this completed.
We could, we could, we could construct a more light starting summertime, but it, 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 it definitely be done by fall. And unfortunately, it, um, spring, spring twenty-two, it'd be, it, it, we can open, we can, we can have a river there.
The funding, the funding's in next year. Not this year, funding would be.
Forty, forty-two is what it would be.
Yes. It'd be ready before then, but we'll probably, couldn't open it because it'd be in the middle of fall, winter.
Yeah, cold.
Yeah.
We have a plunge, a snow plunge, or a ice plunge, or whatever.
So it's my understanding, um, I'm, I'm getting direction to, to move with, with option two and, and, and complete the site plan?
Uh, my recommendation is option two plus the funding for the all-inclusive. So I want to tie both together. We do this in one shot, and that will be easier for you, Chancellor.
Yes, sir.
And, and saving money. On the front end.
Yes.
So that's the most.
I'll say it. I agree. The all-inclusive and the splash pad, um.
And the plan.
And the plan.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
Did you have a subject, concept?
Some two, two.
Concept, sir.
Two.
Escalade.
Escalade.
All day, we got to shake hands, consensus, that's, that's consensus, all right. Very good.
What are one of Marco's stuff, you got something else to Marco?
Very quick, um, quick update on the areas of park, phase one, um, now the archaeological survey is done. The consultant's working on the structural documents. The next, the next phase, you might see them out there in the next two weeks, if you do the boundary topographical survey. And then use that to, um, to create that base map and complete our line drawings. Just reminding you, we're phase one include, um, that would be outdoor classroom, the natural surface trail, lawn and then space, um. Not the media picnic shows, that's not, that's not part of it, that shouldn't be there. Pump house, restrooms.
I think that's.
Rooms, everything, everything except for the media picnic shows.
Yeah, yeah, picnic shows, oh, yeah.
This is phase one.
We would not get this started.
I'm sorry.
Say again?
Where's this gonna start?
Would this?
Well, 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 that.
Would this process come out of the magic song that we grant?
Yes.
This will be a combination of the magic plus and grant, to, to make up, to make up this phase.
We've already, we've already done magic funds.
Right.
That was in this, this current year's budget.
Right.
So quickly, we break grant?
We break grant in the fall. I mean, there, I mean, this, this relatively, oh, well, we can make, we can break grant in the fall if the D's come in as we anticipate.
Okay.
Drew, excuse me, Mayor. We have matching funds in this year's budget?
Yes.
No, it's in next year.
Yeah, I didn't think it was in this year.
This year.
We're not gonna budget it until we actually are ready to spend it.
No, it's not this year, I was like, where is it, I didn't see it.
We're not, we're not paying for anything in this year's budget.
Okay, well, I thought we approved it last year.
We did, but we also approved with that, we will budget it when it's time to actually fund it and be ready to do it.
We get three year, we get three years to spend the money, it's not like we're taking three years, but it, it makes, it, it makes it easier, we all split the three-hundred-thousand dollars.
And probably what we're gonna have to do is establish.
Cause it, it, the project grant is a reversible grant, and so if we spend, we can also ask for what we spent back. We can, we can send them our invoices.
So Drew, are you looking at a three-year for this, for six twenty-five?
For Heritage?
Yeah.
What we'll probably do is set up a project fund for Heritage Park.
Okay.
Since it's several phases, if the next phases come, say we finish phase one and it's fully complete and done, before we start the next phases, then we'll close that project out and start a new one when we do the other phase.
Okay.
It's a, say, three years from now, we're using the bond funds to finish Heritage Park. We'll probably have this done by then, so we'll close it out and start a new one at that time.
That's what I was looking at.
But if, um, if any project that looks like it's gonna be more than one budget year or several, we'll put it in a separate capital project fund, and that fund stays open until that project's completed. But when we fund it with general fund revenues, we'll transfer into that fund with the part of grant. So the part of grant's three hundred, we'll lose three hundred from the general fund. And then that'll fund six hundred thousand for that phase, will stay in a separate fund.
Okay.
So that's gotta be approved.
But that three hundred is that transfer, you can park up the budget, or when we get ready to do it, we'll do a budget amendment for that, Chancellor, moving into that fund. So it may or may not be part of the original approved budget, we'll do it next time.
But it'll start in next year's budget anyways. It'll be in next year's budget, okay.
Last but not least, I was asked by the board to, um, give an update on what kind of improvements that we anticipate for the Golf View Greenway. And for a while, staff and I thought, we looked at, um, um, good places that might be able to, um, put benches, put picnic tables, and some other amenities, so that Golf View Greenway will not only become what we call a linear park. So, cause trails are our essential linear parks, but also that overall area again to feel and look more like a passive environment. So we got a couple of amenities that we wanted to add to enhance what we have out there already to, um, to achieve that goal. So what we decided to do is, um, install benches consistent to the ones that we already had in our park system. And these will be, um, where there are already, um, recycling tracks, sepoles and water stations. Um, in addition to that, we do wanna add a picnic, uh, we've been asked to add picnic tables. We see people, um, having picnics on, on planes already in the spring summertime. So we are looking at a couple of nice areas to add picnic tables. Um, and in addition to that, for people that might wanna ride their bike to, um, to the park, not necessarily walk the whole time. And then we are gonna install, um, bike racks, all consistent with the, the style of, of bench and tracks and stuff. In addition to that, uh, we are looking at installing story, um, storyboards. And these are gonna be in our projects that my staff, um, installed. Um, so that in the future, um, at the golf course and even at, um, municipal park, and we'll be putting, uh, yard signs out for different events. These will be, um, storyboards we can slide in your information. And we envision there being, um, a story told about the history of Cove Mills. It could be about women's month, things of that nature. So we are gonna install these along the trail, um, interpreted, uh, storyboards at, you know, at golf courses. Last but not least, I've, I've, I've seen these, I've, I've put these in other places. I've actually been asked about.
These are new, new designs coming out now.
I, I've actually been asked about some kind of circuit adjacent to the trail. So, but this is long-term plan here. But, um, if I had my way, or in the near future, I would like to install some type of fitting, outdoor fitting circuit. So for people that are walking, they also have the opportunity to get a workout at the same time.
Madam Chair, would them under shade tree?
Madam Mayor.
That's all I have.
And most of you know I'm out there on that golf course a couple of times a week. And I, last weekend, it was really pretty and it was really heavily used. And the common things that I hear about the golf course track is they, they would like, people out there would like to see some benches, um, some picnic tables. Uh, there's even been some folks that, that would ask for a small gazebo in case of, uh. would ask for a small gazebo in case of some hard rain that comes down, but other than that, I mean, they wanna keep it passive, they wanna keep it pretty much the way it is, but just some benches along the trail. Yeah, that's what you just mentioned, so I would definitely, you have my support, hopefully you have most of the board's support to look at some benches and picnic tables.
Do you have a question?
Consensus?
Consensus.
Let's just be part of the budget.
What's, and something that I would mention to you, I know you know that on the current logging trail, there is a fitness circuit, and wondering, could that, could we, would it be feasible to maybe add something to those areas? They wouldn't use the equipment that y'all's putting in, and I don't think I would see it being used like that.
I see, probably not, but I see why, probably they won't, when I'm out in the park. I see, why can't you pull that, that, whatever you can do.
But I don't know if something like this would be feasible, that you could do, do the same thing as that current case is doing, and maybe we could, that's just the thought. I mean, if you're thinking of this at the golf course, then of course, it wouldn't apply that on the logging trail, but it is used a lot. All right, so is there anything else with this that we need to comment?
Parks and Rec, I'd like to be involved.
Okay.
You know, Parks and Rec is using out of their, their portfolio to buy different frames, like angle sanitizer, and all the things, view screens, and foot around, and walking, everything, and Parks and Rec is hosting a softball tournament, and I'd like to see that money from the softball tournament stays with Parks and Rec, and still going into the general fund, so that they can give that money for everything that they need. And I, Drew, can I ask you a question?
What's that?
The money from the softball tournament, and that's what Parks and Rec does, you go in your straight fund, and then you use?
If it's covering our revenues, it's kinda staying with the Parks and Rec.
Okay, thank, that's like ten thousand dollars worth of tournament, one month or one week. Is that money going into the general fund, or is that money going into the market?
It's all in the general fund, because that's our main reporting fund of the town, so every dollar we receive outside store, bar, or pound, goes in the general fund. But if it comes from Parks and Rec, it kinda helps fund Parks and Rec.
I'm very sure.
It doesn't, Parks and Rec spends a whole lot more than the revenues that they receive.
I don't think people realize, Parks and Rec's making the money, it's all a give, 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 just to keep the people satisfied and happy, and the services that people provide, and I would like to see their money to make sure they're staying with Parks and Rec for their improvements.
In a, in a normal non-COVID year, Parks and Rec usually can break in maybe two hundred thousand dollars, but you see their department obviously spends more than that, but we also have that Parks and Rec tax, that separate tax that we have, that brings in around six hundred thousand.
Right.
Which if you add that to two hundred, that's eight hundred thousand, well, they still spend more than that, so the rest of it is the regular town property taxes covers the rest.
Okay, so there's no way to put their, no, they collect gate fees for a tournament?
It's, it's part of their revenue, so they're required.
Okay, it goes to them.
Yep.
Okay.
And we've always done it that way.
That's why, that's what I kinda wanted to make sure of, that, that the money they put out, if they'd be able to, in one way or the other, get it back into their fund.
Right.
As, as, as money they're spending, like I said, even some of you here may not realize, Parks and Rec does not make money. They, they get a, a signed fee for registration, and that doesn't pay the people taking their registration fees. It's a.
But every dime helps.
Every dime helps, I agree.
It's quality of life.
Yeah.
It's just sometimes, I would like to see them be able to bank a little money to use for future projects.
If, when we get new subdivisions, if we were getting all the development fees, and they can't set aside land for open space or a playground or something of that nature, we get fee and loo for Parks and Rec fees, but that money can only be spent on purchasing property somewhere else but park or avenue.
Yeah, and usually we'll get somebody's tinker.
Can you use it on, on Marley's sinkhole?
Anyway, I just wanted to bring it up with Marco, I hope that was okay if you didn't get it.
Oh, it's fine. And one other thing that we're looking at, we just, we didn't get a chance to do it because COVID hit, we're looking at, we're looking at unveiling our donations catalog, so that we could, in addition to revenue, we can do donations. I see donations can be earmarked where specifically it says, you know, this has to be spent on Parks and Recs. Every municipality I've lived in, we've had one of those, we can budget for what we think might wanna donate, let's say we think we might earn, we might be, I think we could easily get thirty thousand dollars worth of donations for Mills. Then those funds get specifically earmarked, some people even wrote parts in, this can only be spent on, we've had those, and, you know, this only be, this two thousand dollars only to the dog park, which is why we're Michael Mason together. Unfortunately, COVID kinda put the brakes on businesses that we're gonna approach, the changer, but we are, my staff has completed the catalog, and hope this year we will, we will unveil that and, and get that, get that on donations campaign going.
Yeah, regarding to you working on the purification, but any money collected from gate fees or tournaments, could be earmarked for something like that. We did that with the lake, that lake money resulted in a lawsuit, couldn't be used for anything.
That built the dam.
Huh?
That built the dam.
Yeah, it couldn't be used for anything but the dam.
Right.
Or anything associated with it, and that's what I'd like to see happen with the gate fees from these tournaments that Parks and Rec. You say they get their line item, we're good.
Yep.
Any other questions? Yes, ma'am? Yes, ma'am?
I just want to ask you a question.
Okay.
If, if my church president of the Parks and Rec, can we get the young officer?
Question she has, with Jerry being the president of youth associations, is that?
I don't get paid for that.
He's allowed to hold two public offices, if that's the question. He can be elected to a public office and he can be appointed to a different public office, and then anything he does as part of being a commissioner doesn't count against that title, so because he's a commissioner, he serves as a liaison to this or that or the other thing, that doesn't count against that number. Number is just for outside appointments and elections, so he's only got two, so he's good that way, I'm not sure if that answers your question.
I just paid David Durden my house. That's the best point in your life.
More than that, if you pay the, for the youth association, he may have refused himself.
Yeah, I think that's probably what you're saying, it becomes the funding that's tied to the youth association.
He would probably have to refuse himself in that situation.
Yeah.
I'm doing it for Marco.
Yeah, I'm with that.
But the funny, and I'm talking about, has nothing to do with the youth program here, that you do in Parks and Rec.
Yes, ma'am?
I have one more thing, and I'll be short, because I know everybody's ready to go, but, and I was with Marco this morning, we were at, in our last Parks and Rec meeting, it was a conversation that came up about the building, and that, you know, I was told, we had this discussion, that it's ten air conditioning units that run the Parks and Rec's building, I'm not into heating, heating there, anything like that, I knew, I was told there was some renovations to that building, dome and everything, but I was just finding out if that is, first of all, it has to be very expensive to run, to heat and, and cool that building with ten units everywhere, is that the best thing, because sometimes I just feel like things like that, it costs a lot of money on the front end of things, but it's saving you a lot of money on the back end, getting all of the student concerns, then things of that nature.
Right, that'd be something, he's got a building maintenance staff that are kinda in charge of the heat and AC for his building, so I don't know what the status is for that.
Well, we're, we're in the process, we work with public works, our first, our first, our first course of action is gonna be to do an RFP and get a new service, look at getting a new service professional in place for company, to evaluate the ten units and see if there's a more efficient way to heat and cool our buildings. The last thing we want, and mind you, even though it's has repairs, that's just a little twenty years old, I got, I got construction documents, specs in my office, so I know the whole of this, and that's, that's usually the age of an HVAC system. Second thing I do know, having managed a construction problem, get HVAC, a building of my size should only have maybe three twelve-ton units, ten is a lot, so when they told me ten, and, and, and when I found out that VAS is, is servicing maintenance on ten units, you know, that, that kinda raised a red flag. In a perfect world, it would've been engineered and balanced, you know, through a local engineer, but that didn't happen. That might be something to look at in C I P requests in the future, at least have the engineering done, get cost estimates, and then, and then, and then look at having those replaced, because the last thing, and I worry about this, is to have, to have a system totally go down like Town Hall does, and this would be really expensive, because then you're gonna be in emergency mode where you gotta replace it when you have to, except, you know, instead of having the time to go to the right wing and replace it on our own terms, it's gonna be where we got programs going on, we got kids in summer camp, and it's hot in my building, and there's nothing we can do about it, and people want their money back because we're, the build, the HVAC is working, so that's my two cents on it. We, we're looking at getting somebody into a first step, to tell us what the issue is, and once we're all, tell us how we can fix it, so that, you know, it's not breaking that in two weeks.
Any questions? Thoughts? Nice talk. Well, it is now two forty-two. And is there, is there anything else good for the, um, the next phase of this will be staff?
Well, as far as for the budget process, I sent out their budget documents earlier this week for them to give me their justification requests for next year. I will, that's due, I think, the last week of this month, I think March twenty-fifth. Once I get that, I'll start putting those notebooks together with all the justification and everything, not Melissa, but I think Spill and I will then start meeting with these department head sometime in April, and go over everything with them, and then by the end of April, my plan is usually to have it balanced, so that we give you your, that thick notebook with everything in it, that first week of May, or the first campus meeting of May, and then y'all set a budget workshop sometime in May, after you've had a chance to look at it for your questions, and then after that, we set a public hearing in June and hopefully improve it for next year.
And do you think it would be feasible that for our next four meetings, that we have an update on where we are, what we've asked to get done by June, or where we move?
On the fifteenth, well, most of this stuff will be included in the request for next year.
No, no, I mean, the stuff will be done on May.
I was gonna say, the stuff that you want with the current year, sounds like it's more along the lines of the church.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, is, so we won't, it won't, we won't have lag time, or something happened between now and March fifteenth, and something happened between March fifteenth and April first.
Just, just like to point out to you, the, the date for the cutoff for agenda items for March fifteenth is Tuesday, so.
Two days to get to the gym.
Okay, so, so, and the first, all I'm saying is, what we don't want, what we don't want to happen is for this not to move, because you're gonna be tied up with other stuff, and this is important right now.
Right, and I think the only thing that's relative to the current year was the church.
Yeah.
I mean, so everything else will be part of the budget request for next year, so.
That's correct.
That's, just stuff will be put together into the budget that you'll get in the first week of May.
All right, any other questions or concerns?
I'd just like to say, thanks very much for coming out today, Bill, thank you for joining us, glad to have you with us, you don't have to read here and say, I'm not comfortable.
I'm forward to work on these posts.
And next thing, see you tomorrow, everybody, really, I'm gonna come.
Okay, thanks for everybody, have a great weekend.